Please. Good evening. We have a quorum. May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Haney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts. Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Thank you, Gail, and welcome to the May 10, 2022, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Bill, will you please say the pledge?
Certainly. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, a roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
I mean, yes.
You fooled me there for a second. Are we here or are we yes?
Here, we're here.
I'm here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Haney, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Any presentations tonight?
No presentations tonight.
Okay, any commission reports?
No commission reports tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to public communication. Just a reminder to the public, these are items not on the agenda, and because they're not on the agenda, we cannot discuss them. When you make a comment, we're not ignoring you. We appreciate your viewpoint and participation. We can agendize for the future. And each comment is three minutes, and I'll be asking the council, never mind, in the sense of fairness and efficiency, please stop talking when the time is up, and model civility and respect. No giving away time to another speaker. We're doing our best to run an efficient and productive meeting, so thank you very much for your cooperation. So tonight, we have just two public communications, Gail? Okay, first, we have Ron Solozano from our library.
All righty. Thank you so much, members of council. My name is Ron Solozano, and I am the regional librarian for the Ojai Valley. Tonight, I wanted to give you another update on the operations of the Ojai Library. So the library is currently open for the full seven-day week schedule. Customers are able to fully access our collection, and many of our typical programs are returning to meeting in person. Perhaps most exciting right now is the fact that our 2022 summer reading program is beginning as of May 15, and both children and adults are going to be able to join our reading challenges online through our website. Along with our reading challenge, where young ones can track the minutes that they read, and adults can track the books they read, the Ojai Library is also going to offer special programs that will include board game and Lego sessions, science, art, and writing workshops, and the long-awaited return of our weekly storytime for children ages zero to five years old. The library also continues to visit the Ojai Community Farmers Market on the second Thursday of every month, and our Pause for Reading Therapy Dog Program continues every Wednesday afternoon. Also, our mobile library is still visiting the Miners Oaks Elementary School campus every Friday at 10:30 a.m. to deliver their outdoor storytime. For adults, we have two special events coming up. One is actually taking place at the E.P. Foster Library in downtown Ventura, where former Hells Angels President George Christie will speak on this Saturday, May 14. On the following Saturday, May 21, a local author, Elizabeth Kraus, will be coming to the Ojai Library to talk about her travel memoir entitled Three Sisters, Three Weeks, Three Countries, Still Talking. For more information on these or any of our other programs, you can contact the library or visit our website at www.vencolibrary.org. That's all I have for now. Thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ron. Next, we have Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. Hello. As of Friday, when reading the new issue of the Ojai Valley News, I have an informational item to share. In the extensive article about the appeal of the city planning commission approval of El Roblar redevelopment, I read a brief statement about mindful citizen Simply Ojai, which is the hotel appellant, having a new structure called Fuel Reduction Works, which is receiving a grant of funds from the state organization CalFire. In my opinion, they deserve congratulations for the award of $492,000 for their project. I tried to stay current on what's going on, and this is brand-new to me. I went to the CalFire website and looked at their current grant approvals. There are 40 of them throughout California. The Fuel Reduction Works grant, the work plan was described by CalFire as follows: Removing incendiary amber cast and firebrand-producing fuels by eucalyptus, Italian cypress, fan palm, et cetera, around homes in adjacent open areas owned by willing participants that are solely in the very high-fire-hazard severity zone, state responsibility zone, and also local responsibility area zone. There are 543 homes in the project area. By dramatically reducing the number of ignitions in future fires, we are limiting the size and intensity of fire occurrences. Long-term greenhouse gas emission reductions will be achieved via reduction in acres and structures burned over time, and by substantially diminishing the chances of wildland or urban fire because becoming out of control. From the Ojai Valley News commentary, I want to quote this section, as it recognizes the local person who will be instrumental in the grant's implementation. Quote, "The project manager listed on the grant application obtained by the Ojai Valley News through a Public Records Act request is Ojai resident Tom Francis, who, according to the grant budget, will be paid just over $50,000 as manager of the project, stated to be completed in 2024." The summary of the grant is Northern Ojai Incendiary Fuel Amber Cast Reduction Project. And in conclusion, this surely is a windfall for a portion of our valley, which will add to all the previous and current efforts to prevent, and if not prevent, reduce damage from wildfires. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments on Zoom, Gail? If anyone in the Zoom meeting, Zoom queue, who would like to speak, please use the raised hand function now. No one's raising their hand. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, so move and note that Councilperson Blatts has joined us on Zoom.
Great.
I'll second.
Okay.
I had a comment on the, I apologize, I had a comment on the consent calendar.
Sorry, can you repeat that, Ryan?
I have a comment on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay.
On item J, I was just wondering if the council wanted, we were canceling one meeting in each of the next couple of months for summer recess, but I was thinking that it might make more sense if we did the second one in July and the first one in August rather than the first one, or a second one in each, so they weren't, you know, they were back-to-back rather than have this one, have one, this one, and then have one? I just wanted to know if the council would prefer to do that. I thought that made more sense.
And I can note just quickly that we did check the, all four of those meetings, and there's nothing time-sensitive that would result in us not being able to cancel one, keep one. So that would, that would be an option for council if it's desired.
I like the option.
Excuse me, what option?
What Councilperson Blatts is suggesting is that we created larger space of timeout rather than meeting, timeout, meeting, timeout.
I have no preference. I was just interested in what you said, James, about the time-sensitive item.
Yeah, so we checked all, both meetings in July and both meetings in August, and as long as we have a meeting in each month, which Councilmember Blatts' proposal would still keep, we should be fine. So I think that would be canceling July 26 and August 9.
That's fine. Either way is fine.
Okay, all right, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ryan. A roll call, please, Gail? Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Thank you, Gail. All right, we will move on to item number two, the public hearing. Appeal of design review permit regarding the proposed remodel of the Hotel El Roblar site, formerly the Oaks of Ojai. And just in terms of the procedure, the appeal will begin with a brief staff report of the project and the history, followed by council questions for staff. The public hearing will then be opened. The applicant will be given an opportunity to provide a brief overview of their proposal. The appellant will then be given an opportunity to provide information regarding the appeal. The applicant and then appellant will each have an opportunity to rebut. The council will then ask questions of staff, applicant, or appellant. The public will then provide comments. The public hearing will then be closed, followed by council deliberation and a decision. And you don't have to remember that, because I'll remind you. Okay, so, James, you want to take it away?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So this item, the appeal of the design review permit for the proposed remodel of the Hotel El Roblar site is a public hearing, and so, as you mentioned, we'll be holding a public hearing and allowing for public comment. The item is a, being appealed is the design review permit for the Hotel El Roblar, which was formerly the Oaks at Ojai. The Oaks at Ojai operated as a 46-room hotel and included an interior dining room with patio. The remodel, we'll get into in a moment what the remodel proposes, but just a little bit of history. The project was approved by the Planning Commission, with the majority of the project approved 4 to 1 on April 6, and the remaining lighting and landscaping plan were approved by the Planning Commission on April 20, 2022. An appeal was filed by the appellant on April 20, 2022. The appeal is a, considered a de novo hearing. The site was constructed, the project site was constructed in 1919 with several modifications and expanses, expansions since that time, which are detailed in the staff report and in the historic report. The hotel, as I mentioned, most recently operated as the Oaks, but closed during the Thomas Fire. The Hotel El Roblar is proposed to be remodeled as a full-service 50-room hotel comprised of 11 bungalows or suites and 39 hotel rooms within the main two-story hotel building. Modifications to the exterior are proposed to remove the 2003 to 2004 Mission style revisions, and the applicant, I think, will talk a little bit about their vision, but my understanding is the vision is to return the design closer to its original design roots. The city required a historic resources report for the proposed changes to the exterior. The city's Historic Preservation Commission supported, reviewed the proposed design and supported the proposed design, which is the design with arches. The report talked about some of the different designs, but it's the design with arches. The Planning Commission then ultimately approved that design as well. Most of the modifications proposed in the project are the repurposing of existing space, but there is some new construction related to the gym building and pool facilities. The Planning Commission, when they reviewed and approved the project, focused on a couple of areas that I wanted to highlight. One was operating hours for the hotel, restaurant, and event center. Briefly, the hotel will operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The 66-seat restaurant and 42-seat bar or lounge area would be open between 7 a.m. to 11 p.m., and the event center would include a capacity of 150 seats and be operational between 8 a.m. to 9 p.m. Sunday through Wednesday, and 8 a.m. to midnight Thursday through Saturday. The Planning Commission included a condition that the city review the hours of operation and the uses on the one-year and three-year anniversaries of the certificate of occupancy being issued, so those reviews will be scheduled if the project is approved. Another issue that was discussed, in addition to the operating hours, is the parking for the project. The Planning Commission actually reviewed the parking and gave feedback several times in December, January, and again in April as part of the approvals. To summarize that issue, the I.T.E. standards, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers, the I.T.E. standards identify a requirement of 78 parking spaces. The project applicants proposed a plan to provide 78 spaces across three locations. Forty spaces are onsite, which will be accessed, which may be accessed via valet. Eighteen are at the, a lot just north of the hotel site at 202 North Ventura Street, which is owned by the applicants, which would also be accessed via valet. And then 20 spots are dedicated as employee self-parking with no guest or no valet parking, and, which is behind the beacon location. Staff previously recommended allowing 15 of those spaces to count towards the requirement. The Planning Commission approved allowing all 20 spaces to count, so that was included in the approval. And so, lastly, the last key element of the project that we wanted to highlight is the project will be subject to the public art, the city's public art requirement. Because the composition of the arts commission was recently changed, and the commission still is requiring, still needs to have some appointments made to be able to have a quorum, we are recommending that the council approve the agreement identified as attachment and in the report, which will require the applicant to immediately deposit the total fee amount of the public art fee into an escrow account, and that would allow the city and the applicant to work towards requiring with the public art requirement in full by October 21, 2022. This is intended to allow time for the public art process to ensure the best result rather than a rushed project right at the entrance to the city, so we thought that was important. And so, that is a highlight of some of the key elements of the project. I believe the city attorney will add a couple of comments in as part of the staff report.
Thank you, James. Mr. Vega, mayor and council, a couple additional points. As you know, most are familiar with the project, but a couple additional points. One, in the staff report, there are two corrections that are worth noting. Number one is on page three, there's a reference to the outdoor pre-function area as part of the general area, the general courtyard, and that's not quite correct. It's correctly noted in the conditions, the outdoor pre-function area is part of the event center. Why this is relevant is because that means that the outdoor pre-function area would be subject to the conditions on hours and other operations, including capacity, of the event center. So that, that's one correction there. Second correction is, as to the one-year and three-year reviews, condition number 23 correctly notes that the condition is to review the functions of the event center, not the entire hotel, and that was not quite precisely stated in the staff report. So the one- and three-year reviews, as approved by the Planning Commission and is recommended by staff or the council to approve, it would be that that review is of the event center's operations. And then that's an opportunity to assess, is it working well or not, and if it's not working well, then what adjustments should be made to make it work well? And again, that's the one- and the three-year opportunities. Second is, in the proposed findings, staff has two recommended additions should the council approve the project. One would be on the finding G in the resolution, and I apologize, I don't have in front of me which page that is, but we will find that in a moment. Finding G is on page five of Attachment A, the resolution, or, which is also packet page 2-19, and it would be in finding G, which currently states, "There are adequate provisions for public access, water, sanitation, and public utilities and services to ensure that the proposed use would not be detrimental to public health and safety. Subject site is served by public utilities." We'd add a reference as to water demand. A report submitted yesterday, this morning, by Watership Progressive shows that the existing hotel facility has adequate water connections and has maintained a water service connection, and it's, as proposed, the project would reduce water demand by approximately 55% compared to the previously operating hotel. And then, second, also on the same, the next page, finding J, which is on page 2-20, or page six of Attachment A. As regards parking, staff would recommend adding a reference to the discretion in Table 3.5 of the Ojai Municipal Code, Section 10 to 1405, that allows the director on recommendation, the planning commission on approval, council on appeal, to determine that the mix of uses for a mixed-use project can be, required parking can be determined by the I.T.E. study. The basis for that is to draw the connection between the 78-space requirement, as noted by Mr. Vega's comments and in the past discussions, drew from the I.T.E. study, to add a reference to that in the resolution. And then is noted, as proposed, 78 required parking spaces, and 78 have been provided through three pieces: 40 onsite, 18 at 202 North Ventura, and 20 at 209-211 West Ojai Avenue. Last, staff recommends a minor adjustment to the public art compliance agreement, and on this one, I have a handout. And this is, I won't, the addition is to add a new Section Six that would provide that in the event of acts of God, other things beyond the applicant's control, the timelines for the public art piece could be adjusted, and that if the project ever did not proceed, the city would return the money. The reason being that the $50,000 that would be paid in by the applicant, if this is approved, is for public art. If it is never built, the city would have to return the money. And with that, I would add that we are available for questions, both myself, the city manager, community development director, and a number of consultants on the city side. In particular, worth noting, the city's historic consultant, Ev, what was the name, Evangeline, not Evangeline?
Evan.
Evan. Evan St. Clair with Architectural, St. Charles, thank you, with Architectural Resources Group is available this evening through the Zoom for any questions on the historic issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions from council? Suzie?
Is it, would it be possible or desirable to separ, oh, over here, sorry. Thank you for telling me. Is it po, can we consider separating the issue of the facade, the two choices for the facade, from the five main issues that is in the, is in the appeal? Because the appeal does not include any reference to the facade. My thinking is that, you know, we have a large audience, there's going to be a lot of comments. Would it make sense to separate the two, but start with the appeal, because if that takes too long, perhaps, you know?
So council can consider it in pieces, but the decision has to be as to the project as a whole. We cannot approve half a project, so, or disapprove half a project. Either way, that has to be a decision. So council could consider it in pieces, and if desired, it can always be continued. But my recommendation would be to, as much as possible, take it in chunks, but in the end, get to a decision on the whole project.
Okay, okay, so that was my other question. We, it's, it's not, it's all or nothing tonight, say that we have an issue with, say, one of the items in the appeal?
So I should clarify there. The council's options are approve the project as proposed, deny the project, thereby affirming the appeal, or approve it with conditions, or remand it back to the Planning Commission for a further assessment of either the whole project or one piece. So an option would be to refer it back to the Planning Commission to look at one piece of it, if that would be necessary. But those are your four basic options: approve, deny, approve with conditions, kick back to the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Other questions? Randy, and then Bill?
Just real quick, I have the application for appeal in front of me, and Suzie, I don't see the five concerns. Am I missing something?
They're bullet points right here on page two of the letter, yeah, that we received a letter from Leslie Hess.
Leslie Hess is not the applicant.
I believe she's director of Simply Ojai.
She's not on, she's not on the application. So do we need a, do we need some form of ruling on that, that who's the applicant and who's not the applicant, and something that has been sent to us is subject to the comment period? Am I, am I clear on that? Am I right on that?
Let me clarify a couple of points. So number one, the stated appellant, the applicant is the Hotel Roblar owner. Appellant is Megan Burkfest for Simply Ojai. Thus, the appellant is Megan Burkfest or any bona fide representative of Simply Ojai, who was listed as the aggrieved person. Ms. Hess submitted a letter yesterday, or the day before, that yesterday, that purports to be from and on behalf of Simply Ojai. I do not know to what extent Ms. Hess is in that role as a director of Simply Ojai. I presume she'll speak tonight and prove up that status. The council on appeal can consider any issue raised by any member of the public. The appellant raised two issues in their appeal, summarized as intensity of use too high, parking inadequate, and the council must consider those two issues. The council can also consider any other issue about the project, because it's a de novo hearing. As a result, you could consider the issues raised by Ms. Hess and her letter. You could also disregard them as not raised in the appeal. That's a choice.
Thank you.
So again, I just need to clarify this. So this is the appellant, and Megan is the appellant, am I correct?
Yes, but she did so in a representative capacity, not in her personal capacity. Equivalent to, if I appeal something for the city, I'm not personally the appellant, the city's the appellant. In this case, she appealed as a representative of unincorporated group of citizens, as far as I know, although, again, we haven't been provided proof as to Ms. Hess's status.
So, just for clarification, so that means that anyone who belongs to this organization can come here tonight and represent Simply Ojai?
The group will be limited to about 10 minutes in representatives, and we would need to understand how they are a representative of that group.
And how do we arrive at 10 minutes?
That's a rule of reason, subject to the mayor and council's control. About 10 minutes for the applicant, about 10 minutes for the appellant, subject to council control, of course.
I'm going to watch the clock.
That's not a hard rule. More about efficient meeting.
Okay, well, like I said, I'm just trying to be clear on, so this is my, probably my second appeal in seven years, so it's just, it seems, it seems to me to be a little out of the ordinary that we have someone.
Stick to questions first, though?
Yeah, I will.
Do you have a question?
No, no, this is a question. Please, let me finish. So, being, being as it is different, how are we to determine the right response to the letter we received yesterday? And any other letters that we have received, do we take them all in kind? Do we take them all separate? Do we need to take every, every individual letter that has come to us and break it down and say, well, this was with Simply Ojai, and this is just a citizen? How do we make those determinations?
So my recommendation is to take it as a whole. The project is proposed. Arguments against it by the appellant were submitted in the written document in your hand. Let's consider those two, and that's what's done in the written resolution, and then consider any other arguments raised by anyone else as worthy or not worthy of review and assessment. Staff's assessment is that of all the arguments raised so far, in order to fulfill the Planning Commission's decision, just two edits would need to be made to the findings, the one on water and the second on parking. The rest have been dealt with. But that would be my recommendation, is to take it as a whole.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor.
Bill?
Just two quick, I think I, my question's been answered, so I'm going to phrase it in the form of, am I correct, then, in my understanding, that the council must address the grounds for appeal that were filed originally, and it's our discretion on grounds beyond that?
Yes, that's correct.
And the second thing is, as of the beginning of this meeting, we, we do not have a list of members or participants in Simply Ojai.
Nothing has been submitted to the city.
Ryan, any other questions?
Yes.
Ryan, go ahead.
I, you know, I wrote it down, and I'm not finding exactly where, but I was on page 18 of 22, but there, I didn't write down which attachment, there's so many. But there was a section that said there was a maximum of one event per month for local nonprofit and other community events, and I wondered if there was, you know, I don't want to deliberate about that now, but I wanted to make sure that was written correctly, and what the rationale, if any, was behind that. Was that to limit local events? Because I'd hate to see, if there's one month where there happened to be two community nonprofit events that could be potentially at an event center, I don't know why we'd be minim, why we'd be putting a max on it. When I first read it, I thought, oh, they're promising one, but I thought, well, that doesn't make sense. And no, it was actually a cap on how many they could have.
Yeah, that was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting. I think the general idea was, the, the general discussion was focused on making sure there weren't too many events that would start impacting neighbors and the community. But I do remember that, that same question came up, where the commission was asking for, you know, why we would want to put a limitation on number of local events in particular. So that is a standard, or that is something we could modify relatively easily.
Yeah, well, that was, that was all I needed for now. That was the question. I'll get back to it later. Thank you.
Question about the Watershed Progressive report that we received this afternoon around three?
Yes.
That, that is not present in any other report, planning commission report. Did the planning commission get that?
To my knowledge, the city received it today.
Okay.
We had not received it before.
I don't recall it being in the planning commission report.
So, yeah, we confirmed it was not in the city's files before.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I guess that's—Randy?
Just one last question regarding that, though. If I remember correctly, the El Roblar group did bring up the water-saving features to, to planning commission, am I correct?
Yeah.
I believe that's correct, yes. Orally, just not written.
This report substantiates their verbiage that they articulated in the planning. Am I correct?
Correct.
Good.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, the public hearing will now be open, and we will hear from the applicant for an overview of the proposal, and it's—I will, I will keep an eye on the clock.
James, can we pull up the slides?
Mayor Mamika, one quick comment. Exporté Suzie and I did meet with this group on Friday and did a walkthrough of the property. I think we were there about a half hour. So I just want to make that, let the public know that we did do that.
I would add that I think we were there for over an hour. Yeah, I mean, and I, I stayed after you did.
Oh, you, well—
I walked the outside.
I sat in my truck for a long time answering messages, but—
Yeah. Okay. I didn't know we had to disclose that, but—
Yeah, Mayor, council, before we have Mr. Shamsiri speak, why don't we confirm on the record who, anyone else who visited the site?
Warner gave me a tour a long time ago. Remember Warner? It was a while back. It was a long time ago.
I had a tour a very long time ago as well.
We've all been here a very long time. So should we get started?
It's six thirty-four, so—
Be generous, please. Okay, I'll race through it. Well, good evening. My name is Rameen Shamsiri, and I'm one of the partners of the Hotel El Roblar, and I've been here in Ojai for fourteen years. I wanted to start by thanking everyone here for taking the time to review our project, and also wanted to thank city staff for all the work you've done in the last few years to getting us to this point, and thank you to the council members that have come out and took the time to tour the project to better understand our proposal. Also wanted to introduce our team. We have Warner Ebbink, Eric Good, and Jeremy McBride scattered back here. For the benefit of the council and general community, I prepared a brief presentation for the project, which has been documented in the administrative report. Hopefully, it's not too redundant. But our proposal intends to renovate and restore the hotel, most recently known as The Oaks, into the Hotel El Roblar, the original name of the hotel when it was built by Edward Libby in nineteen nineteen, and was recognized as the city's foremost resort hotel that was open year-round prior to World War II. We started this process almost three years ago, months prior to closing escrow on the property, which occurred in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. The hotel has been closed since two thousand and seventeen due to the Thomas Fire, and we began conversations with the city on permitting our project to reestablish its historic entitlements, which was a full-service forty-nine-room hotel that had fifty parking spots, and based on our initial reports, was historically underparked by thirty-four cars since nineteen seventy-two. Our intention is to bring the hotel back to its original roots and make the entire property feel like it's always been there, an integral part of the history of Ojai. We're truly honored and humbled to carry on the spirit and tradition of this iconic property, and we're, we were thrilled when the Clough family chose to sell the property to our group because they felt it was in the best interest of the city. We, we intend to treat it with the utmost respect and care, both architecturally and socially, and we hope to create a place that caters not only to visitors, but also can capture the spirit of the local community and invite them to share in the amenities. The hotel is over a hundred years old, and everything we are proposing works within the historic entitlements that have been established and occurred over time, such as overnight accommodations, the event space, the restaurant, bar, lounge, used to have live music, and then the amenities like the swimming pool. We believe the ultimate aesthetic impact will be minimal and improve the look and feel of the site while implementing the conveniences, efficiencies, and amenities of a full-service hotel. We chose the path to restore this hotel, and this includes the process of rehabilitating each room from scratch. It's a process that requires more resources and time than a ground-up project. Rehabilitating old buildings is a skill I've been working on for most of my career, and the most obvious challenge for this project is the existing parking configuration, as well as creating a sustainable model for a hotel, given the realities of today's climate. How can we open the public spaces that we read so much about during the twenties and fifties and comply with current codes? How can we do this when there aren't, there has never really been enough parking to begin with? How can we work to create a sustainable project in a building that's a historic contributor to a district and is over a hundred years old? And as you know, our plans have been approved by the planning commission, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. So the solutions, and those solutions are what you're hearing today. So I wanted to walk you through our initial concept. I guess we can go to the next slide. Who is—am I doing it? Okay, so we were first inspired by the original architectural style of building, and we looked to the work of Irving Gill, who mentored Mead and Recqua before they opened their own practice, and were hired by Libby to do a good portion, portion of the Ojai Historic Core. These are some early photos. We can go to the next slide. And the site plan and drawings, we can go to the next slide, as well, and the next slide. So this is the current site plan that we have existing, and we can go to the next slide. And this is the proposed site plan, which I think you've all reviewed in the package. As noted, we'd like to remove a good bit of the parking on the perimeter to replace it with more drought-tolerant landscaping, so that you're not looking at a building surrounded by cars with curb cuts, but rather a nicely landscaped perimeter with usable sidewalks. Our proposed plan will result in a reduction of ten parking spots on the actual property, while adding in addition on nine street parking spots open to the public that don't exist today. So the net loss on-site would be one spot. This does not include the additional thirty-eight spots we secured at off-site, private locations. We want to encourage pedestrian foot traffic that brings vibrancy to a community. The playhouse, Libby Park, the playground, the tennis courts, Libby Bowl, the museum, Bart's Books, the library, the market, everything is within a five-minute walk of the hotel. We can go to the next slide. This is our proposed facade on Ojai Avenue, which would reincorporate the original pedestrian arch built in nineteen nineteen, and we want it to simplify and clean up the facade by extending the current arched arcade that supports the balconies above. These are arches that are already there, and they're already on about one-third of the facade, and we want to just extend it all the way across. This is the approved facade, which we feel is more romantic and pleasing architecturally. It creates a seamless transition from the required structural columns to support the balconies. We feel it's more aligned with the downtown historic core and complements it rather than competes with it by using arches that are a different scale than what exists in the core, and they're also set back from the street nestled behind trees and landscape. In October of last year, we were told we had to go through historic review and followed all the city protocols, completed a new historic resources report, and presented our facade options to the historic commission. After much back and forth on the legality of the Secretary of Interior standards, they supported us unanimously in favor of our preferred facade with the arches. It was then contested at the following planning commission hearing, and they too supported the arches as well. We can go to the next slide. In our research, we found some original drawings and photos of the interior, which we used as a basis for our plans. We can go to the next slide. This is the original fireplace, and the next slide. We can keep going, sorry. Next slide. So this is a rendering of the lobby, which is based on those drawings, and we'd like to bring back that orig—oh, sorry, go back one, sorry. We want to bring back that original rock fireplace, the board and bat paneling, and used classic terracotta tiles. We can go to the next slide. These are the drawings of the restaurant off the main lobby on Ojai Avenue. The working name is The Condor Bar, and this is the one we'd like to have open to the public. We can go to the next slide. This is the same Condor Bar, and the next slide. This is our proposed breakfast and lunch restaurant, which is facing the pool. It's on the north side of the main building in one of the areas we're proposing to demolish on the, on the facade. It has a mid-century look and not in keeping with the characteristics of the rest of the property, and we hope to bring back the original character of the building with a more Spanish-style elevation and interior. Next, please. This is the proposed banquet hall, originally known as the Flamingo Room, which we intend to keep, and that remains within the existing footprint of the hotel. We can keep going. These are our guest rooms. Each room will have unique touches that will honor the history of Ojai, potential imagery of Beatrice Wood and Krishnamurti, and we're using vintage posters from the Ojai Music Festival. We can go to the next one, and the next one, I think. Okay, so overall, we hope to create an experience that captures the essence and history of Ojai and allows visitors and locals to appreciate our beautiful downtown historic core. Concurrently, we hope to bring more foot traffic and revenue to local businesses while restoring and improving the TOT tax and sales tax that was lost to the city since the closure of The Oaks. We're estimating one and a quarter million dollars per year in additional tax revenue for the city. We hope to create forty new hospitality jobs, over a hundred short-term construction jobs. We will also be working on attaining one percent for the planet certification by giving one percent of our revenues to local environmental causes like the Ojai Land Conservancy. We have since met with some of those opposed to our plan, and oddly, we both want the same things. We don't want the hotel to have a major impact on local parking and congestion, but we simply have different, we have philosophical differences on the best way to get there. They believe that we should have self-parking that directs visitors to lots or spaces allotted for them. They believe that valet is cultury, wrong, and elitist, and will congest the streets with extra trips. We think that plan will create a parking free-for-all, with visitors driving around not knowing where to go and taking whatever street parking they can find. Our goal is to keep as many cars as we can off of our public streets and out of our public parking spots. The use of valet gives us the opportunity to have greater capacity in private lots not open to the public. It gives us the ability to control where our guests park and allows us to have their cars moved by staff that know where they are going. It keeps the cars off the street, essentially allowing for more parking for locals, less cars driving around, and ultimately, less of an impact on the community. If there's a significant, significant concern about solving the parking problem, we request that this council take action on this important issue and create a special parking commission to foster ongoing cooperation among businesses, residents, and city agencies in order to address them in a collaborative way. Also, if the goal of the valet ordinance is to push for open to all parking, then shouldn't we be afforded the same freedoms as the other businesses on Ojai Avenue that don't have to adhere to any parking requirements? We've been playing along by the rules set in front of us for three years. We have watched a number of businesses open on Ojai Avenue, and a number of businesses continue to operate on Ojai Avenue, most of which have little or no parking at all. We have presented a variety of proposals with options that provide significantly more parking than, more parking spaces than our predecessor with essentially the same entitlements. In regards to the environmental concerns, we have been working with a company called Watershed Progressive to come up with a sustainable plan for the project. Today, we have submitted a detailed report that includes landscape and irrigation upgrades, low-flow fixtures, potential rainwater harvest, and gray water reuse, all of which will reduce water consumption by about fifty-five percent from the current infrastructure. Furthermore, the HVAC was already designed to be entirely electric with a heat pump, and our first pass at the water heating design was a high-efficiency gas tank, but we are in the process of reviewing the feasibility of solar thermal pre, a solar thermal preheat system, as well as installing a PV electrical system on some of our roofs. As locals, this is a passion project for us, and none of us want to lose the soul of Ojai. But we also think the soul of Ojai is strong enough to persevere the presence of a couple of parking attendants to reopen an existing hotel that has operated for most of the last century. These delay tactics have to stop. They undermine the public process and the authority placed in the hands of your planning commission and your historic commission. We need to move forward and harness progressive planning and ideas, as stagnation does not provide any solution to today's concerns. We imagine this site will continue to evolve as we manage through it together, and we can't predict everything that's going to happen, but we know that our hearts and intentions are in the right place and will work together to resolve any issues that may come up. At this point, we ask that the representatives of the city be consistent and true to your process. Help us move this project ahead and restore this site to its original glory. Thank you again for all your time this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Rameen. Thank you. Thank you. We will now hear from the appellant. And that was fourteen minutes, just so you know. That was good.
Thank you. Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First of all, I want to thank you for your service. Thank you for all you do for our city. And my name is Tom Francis, and I'm representing Simply Ojai this evening. Simply Ojai is a nonprofit organization that works to protect the environment and keep Ojai Ojai. I also want to clarify one point, which is that in Ms. Burkfest, when she filed the appeal, she wrote on there that she reserved the right, and that Simply Ojai reserves the right to add things to the record. That was on the appeal form, and so it was, I think it was made clear that, that the, there was going to be more information coming.
Can we please have decorum in the audience? Thank you.
Simply Ojai wants the hotel to reopen as soon as possible. That is our intent, but we also think that there's a number of ways that the project can be improved in a very short period of time if the, if the council agrees to do so. Sadly, we concluded we must appeal the planning commission's decision to approve the hotel project due to substantial flaws in the approval process, as well as the proposed expansion of use and parking plan, which, if approved, will negatively impact our town and the environment. We believe that the absence of an environmental impact report on the project that would have addressed water supply constraints and other concerns has contributed, contributed to the project's impacts, shortfalls, and delays. Our observation is that the hotel owners got carried away with their plan and are asking to do things that just don't make sense considering the location and spatial limitations of this historic site and the acute water supply uncertainty that is facing Ojai, or that Ojai is facing. Rather than simply renovate and reopen the hotel, the owners propose to increase the intensity of use on the site, externalize a substantial portion of their parking liabilities to off-site locations that lack assurance of permanence, and eliminate all self-parking opportunities from the hotel site that have been, have been part of the hotel operation for decades. I do want to point out that this hotel, I just want to make it clear and make sure everyone understands, that throughout, throughout the past decades, there has been ample self-parking on the hotel-controlled property, and that this is a really big change to go only valet. And so if allowed, these proposed operational changes will unnecessarily create multiple ongoing problems for our town, city staff, and the hotel owners. In an effort to work together to find a way forward, we could all agree on, two of the hotel owners and Simply Ojai representatives recently invested many hours over a period of ten days into negotiations in hope of coming forward to the council with a proposed settlement. Though we succeeded in learning that we had much in common regarding the environment and protecting endangered species, and found potential common ground on reduction of intensity of use, we could not find our way to substantive agreement on a parking plan for the project. We thank Eric Good and Jeremy McBride for investing considerable time into that effort. There's an opportunity to make this hotel renovation much better for the community and the environment, while also ensuring financial success for the hotel owners. Rather than green light the proposed project by affirming the decision of the planning commission, we encourage the council to instead give this project a yellow light, as there are changes that can be made to the proposed plan and the related resolution adopted by the planning commission in a timely manner that would make the hotel the best it can be. Our understanding is that this can happen should a majority of the council vote to conditionally affirm, in part, the planning commission's approval. Therefore, we respectfully request that the council affirm in— Therefore, we respectfully request that the council affirm, in part, the commission's approval while also allowing time to consider improvements to some or all of the five following topics of concern. So I want to emphasize "some" or "all." So we're intentionally offering you guys an à la carte menu. You guys can choose to address one or more of these issues, or all of them, or anything you want to do. They're not being put forward as a whole, okay? So, these topics could be negotiated between city staff, project applicants, and appellants, or city staff and project applicants, with the goal being that a final decision on the renovation plan be made at the May 24 city council meeting. Suggested project improvement number one: Explore options to retain some of the 22 onsite hotel self-parking spaces that are proposed to be eliminated, or other self-parking solutions, rather than adopt the presently proposed plan that, with the exception of employee parking, makes all parking on hotel-controlled properties valet-only. All valet and no self-parking is not Ojai. It's just not. And some of the people that live in Ojai that want to go and eat lunch, or have dinner, or have a drink, are not going to want to go through the grandiose ceremonial process of valet parking their car. So what they're going to do is they're going to park on the street. That's the way it's going to happen, okay? And that's not necessarily the end of the world, but we think it's a better approach to parking, to have it balanced between self-parking and valet. Two, explore options to decrease the number of people allowed in the event center, adjacent outdoor pool, patio area, restaurant, and bar. Suggested improvement number three: Explore options to irrigate landscaping with gray water from hotel operations and capture of stormwater runoff, reducing dependency on dwindling Ojai water reserves. Four, discuss and potentially modify resolution language to more accurately reflect the City of Ojai's ability to attest to availability of adequate water to serve the project. So I noticed that the attorney representing the applicant made an assertion that there's a pipe hooked up to the hotel, and that it's been hooked up for 100 years, so there's no problem with a water hookup. That's not what we're asserting, and it's ridiculous for him to assert that. We're asserting that we're in the middle of climate-driven aridification, and that we've got a problem with our water supply, and that the city should strongly consider, when they're approving projects, to be more honest about what's going on with our water and not just say everything's good. Five, explore options to require that all hotel operations be free of climate-changing natural gas or other fossil energy. Here's some information about uncertainty of water supply. In a June 15, 2021 letter from Leslie Hess to the Ojai Planning Commission regarding Ojai's 2021 to 2029 housing element, as well as an April 6, 2022 letter from myself to the Ojai Planning Commission regarding this hotel renovation and expansion plan, concerns were expressed about the City of Ojai's ability to continue meeting the needs of existing water users and/or demands caused by newly-approved uses or increases of intensity of use. To date, neither the Ojai Planning Commission or the Ojai City Council have provided a meaningful response or action plan regarding these concerns. According to a June 23, 2021, Casitas Municipal Water District study, if present tent trends continue, before long we will reach stage-five drought, where outdoor irrigation is severely limited, if not curtailed. This is, this is a copy of the study. You can see the projection, and it's going to go down, down, down if we don't get rain. We're going to get to stage-five, and there is no stage-six, right? So, Ojai is experiencing extended drought and aridification. Extended drought has occurred many times throughout geological time. This is normal. What is not normal is the compounding factor of climate-driven aridification. Unlike extended drought, aridification is permanent. Aridification in the western United States is directly attributable to climate change and the resulting rise in global average temperatures. In fact, according to data from the National Ocean and Atmospheric Administration, Ventura County has experienced a temperature increase of 2.6 degrees Celsius, 4.75 degrees Fahrenheit, and total warming in the period from 1895 to 2021, which is a greater increase than any other county in the contiguous United States. We've got actually the highest in the country. Considering the fact that Lake Casitas is an open reservoir that provides the Ojai Valley with a large portion of our water reserves, and that rising temperatures increase evaporation rates, that all groundwater basins in the valley and the lake rely solely on rain and snowfall to be replenished, and that present projections are that the extended drought we're experiencing will continue, we are at a loss as to how the planning commission adopted Resolution 2205, which states, quote, "There are adequate provisions for public access, water, sanitation, and public utilities and services to ensure that the proposed use would not be detrimental to public health and safety. Subject site is served by public utilities." In the interest of avoiding potential legal and ecological liability and resulting financial losses for the city, we respectfully request that the city council do what is legally required to amend said resolution language, so that it better reflects current and projected water supply circumstances, and is truthful about the fact that the city's water purveyor has provided information to the public that we may soon hit stage-five drought, and therefore applicant's project may not be able to be adequately served with sufficient water. To be clear, we're not wanting to stop the project, okay? We want the project to go forward, but we want the city to be honest, and this, this resolution is not honest. It lacks information that's important for applicants or anyone else to consider, members of the public to consider, about what's really going on with our water. It's time to start talking about it. Considering Ojai's present dire water supply and reserve circumstances, we assert that Ojai's planning commission and city council need to make decisions that work with, rather than against, the laws of geophysics. Making planning or policy decisions absent meaningful study and consideration of geophysical limitations on our water supply is living in denial and harms the water rights and water security of everyone in the Ventura watershed. In addition, though, we applaud applicant's commitment to low-flow plumbing fixtures and drought-tolerant landscaping. Unless we somehow overlooked it in our review of project staff reports, what is glaringly absent from the plan for this project is a forward-thinking irrigation system that captures and reuses gray water and stormwater runoff from hotel operations for irrigation and other purposes, thereby dramatically reducing reliance on scarce City of Ojai water reserves. Also, from a policy perspective, we recommend that rather than allocate any additional water derived from conservation, a blessing of wetter weather, more sensible agriculture, or other sources, we don't want it to go to new demands such as development, increases of intensity of use, et cetera, and that Ojai instead allocate said water to building our water reserves. So we're running low on water, and we think it's time to stop approving growth that increases demand, and if, and if a project comes forward and they find ways to save water, good for them, but let's apply it to our reserves, not expanding the use on the site. I'm happy to learn that project proponents responded to our assertion that landscapes should not be irrigated with potable water, and at 3 o'clock today, submitted into the record some sort of water plan. This plan was dated April 5th. Not sure why it had to wait till today, as opposed to being submitted to the planning commission. Therefore, we ask council to approve the project in part, and direct staff to perform further review of parking, intensity of use, the city's ability to attest to adequate and stable water supply to serve the project, refraining from use of fossil energy such as natural gas, and a landscape irrigation plan that relies solely on gray water. This thing is really close. Let's give staff and project applicants time to get it right. Thank you for your consideration of these project improvements.
Thank you. And now the applicant has an opportunity to rebut.
Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. As you can tell, I'm the other attorney in the room, and I was referenced just a moment ago. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I don't want to repeat things that your city attorney told you, but there is one thing that's very important in light of council discussion so far. De novo is a fancy Italian, pardon me, Latin phrase, for you get to take a new look at it, and we urge you to take a complete look at the project. The project has been in the process for a number of months, it's been, had many hearings, and the issue about historic preservation has been thoroughly considered. In fact, it is my area of expertise, and it was extraordinary that the choice was made by the Preservation Commission to recommend or state its preference for Design Option 1, notwithstanding, frankly, the somewhat incorrect comments about what's required under the law, water. The report I submitted today was dated recently, not because that information hasn't been available or part of the discussion, but because we need to answer the issues that were raised. 55% reduction. You know, there's adequate water, and the hotel does have a water connection, so I also want to address the, for the first time tonight, someone has used the words environmental impact report. No evidence has been submitted of a significant adverse effect. No evidence has been presented to contradict the city's experts or the city's own analysis. CEQA requires you to consider the project, which you're going to do tonight, hopefully, and hopefully the whole project, and then to examine whether there's substantial evidence on the exemptions, and I think city staff has done an excellent job. So, we don't want the council to be distracted. What's before you is the entire project. It's a good project. Council had a number of comments submitted in the last few days. My count is well over 80% in support. More are the comments about Design Option 1, so no evidence on, presented by the appellant on the issues they've, the two issues they've raised, all the evidence supports the project. I'd be happy to speak more, but I know that Mr. McBride has a few things to say, and we'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Sir, could we get your name for the record?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, I'm Bill Delvac of Armbruster Goldsmith &amp; Delvac Land Use Council for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead? Please. You can, his front row seat, okay?
Glad to be back, welcome again. I want to reiterate our position that was stated this morning about our ask to the council to deny the appeal, uphold the decision of the planning commission, and adopt the draft resolution and administration report with a clarification and minor revisions recommended by staff and the city attorney. Now, I do want to talk a minute about some conversation earlier about the staff report, and a question, Commissioner Blatz, about this 12 events-a-year idea. And it's an interesting one, because it was something we suggested as a condition that mattered to us in our historical review, and we realized that this hotel and this community facility was used by a lot of local businesses. Ojai Chamber of Commerce, it had its first meeting there in the 20s and 30s, also a lot of other organizations and community organizations. So, because of the restrictions we had to put in place to protect our demand and the parking requirements we had, we were limited to allow for someone to have an event at the hotel that didn't book rooms there. So it was our concession, it was a suggestion to basically mirror what was historically offered, but to bring people in to the hotel and experience the offering. So that's what the idea was before. I would love to come back one day and say, it's going so well, we would love to have three events a month, and there's no impact, and show those findings. That's the idea, Commissioner Blatz, and it was that suggestion of ours, so I just wanted to clarify that for you. So just a couple of points on, we spent a lot of time, you know, the good news is, if this doesn't work out, I'm going to be a really good parking consultant. Honestly, I got an offer from someone this morning, so it's fantastic news for me. I have a few points about what was just said, and I want to invite my colleague Eric up to talk about some of the water issues and environmental issues. So, retaining spots back on site, the people who had the great opportunity to come with us and see the hotel, we learned a lot of the conditions don't work, and we also learned this huge problem, which is, we don't have enough parking. Even if we opened today, we're short 34 parking spaces. That's a 50-year condition. Bad decisions get made over time and compound, and we're left with this correction that the only way we can solve is through imagination. What our plan shows, that we've worked tirelessly, way too much time, and this is, this is an emotional point, because time, we're here again talking about this. There's been so many opportunities to bring this to light. It really undermines the hard work people. People are paid to do this work that we actually get to reimburse for, believe it or not. So, it's really saddening that we're wasting time on this. There's so many other issues to deal with. So, we had to come up with a plan to support more parking spaces. We did that multiple times, multiple times, and we figured that out with city staff support, planning commission support, with community support. There's people here today that voice their opinion in the public process, and we figured it out. That's what public process is about. So, we corrected that problem, adding spaces back on site. Honestly, 40% of the ones that are proposed, if you've been to the back of Matilah, are not even code compliant. It's an accident waiting to happen, a liability waiting to happen, so I'm not going to even consider that. The lot we purchased is great. It's going to be, you know, low-impact, no visibility, gravel. We're going to maintain those beautiful trees, there'll be a park bench for community members. I know some people, we learned about, you know, people who've lived close by there. It's going to be a great thing. The neighbor loves it. The residents love it. I don't know what the problem is. We can do onsite valet in the business, but we can't use that lot. It's hypocritical. Frankly, it's really, it's really disconcerting. So, that's kind of where we're at with this parking issue. There's no uncertainty. We own that lot. We own it. We also own the leasehold on Beacon. For the next 14 years, and we can buy it if the seller decides to sell it, we effectively have the entitlements for parking forever. And if we don't, and we have a great conversation with Lucas every year and every three years, we'll learn more, we'll figure it out, we might need more parking, we'll figure it out. That's what we'll do. We've demonstrated that. Give us that benefit of the doubt. We've demonstrated that. Good process, honestly, honest people doing hard work, figuring out solutions. We haven't been tempted to participate in any of this theater around this issue, and we provided solutions, and that's what we continue to do every single day. We're not going to, may I humor a member of the crowd here? Bill, you've been, how many times have you been to one of these meetings?
A lot, all of them.
How many? How many people you think are in this room today?
15, 16.
How many people can be in this room?
17, 18.
Okay, got it. My point is, there's this correlation between this imaginary number of 150 plus 42, we have way too many occupants. Practically speaking, guys, when you account for the main use, which is a social event, you deduct space and circulation you need. What's really funny is, the event center, we're reducing in size. We're reducing it. The total massing is reducing. A lot of it's for back-of-house storage and bathrooms. So, I don't really understand this, this argument about it. You know, it's just this red herring, like everyone talks about, oh, there's, you know, there's no capacity for parking in your community, Ojai Day, 4th of July tennis tournament, all these things people love. Why? Take it away from them. Call attention to a problem that doesn't exist. So, you know, that's my big, my big point on the capacity thing. We're not going to change that. We study it. This is what we do for a living. We do this. We know what we're doing. Trust us. Now, the only thing I'll, I guess that, that's pretty much, I mean, listen, that's pretty much all I have on this stuff. I want to bring up my, I know we're limited on time here, Gail, right?
Yes.
Okay. I want to bring my partner Eric to talk about something.
Sir, can we get your name?
Eric Good. Oh, that's Jeremy McBride.
Jeremy, and your name, sir?
Eric Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. First off, I just want to sort of dispel a lot of misinformation, and I want to get to water, because there was a lot said about water a minute ago. I've lived in Ojai and maintained a house in Ojai. I've had, maintained an house in Ojai for 33 years. I lived here in the 1960s. My father taught at Thatcher School, probably many of you know that. I was a faculty brat. I was here when the 1969 oil spill happened. I was there on the beach, taking the oil off Cormorants. I was here when DDT hit. My mother read Silent Spring and Rachel Carson. My mother had the first solar house in California. It was on the cover of Sunset Magazine. Our car ran by propane during the oil crisis. I grew up in California with an environmentally conscious family. Okay, that's me. I've spent the last 25 years working on environmental issues. Our people were at the Climate Change Summit in Edinburgh this past year. We spent a lot of money on climate change issues, okay? I'm on the Board of Rainforest Trust. We protect 40 million acres of tropical rainforests for carbon sequestration, for oxygen, and for wildlife protection. The two existential threats of the world today is probably climate change and the extinction crisis, a man-made extinction, the Anthropocene. Ojai is a microcosm of what's happening in that respect in terms of aridification and water. I want to talk a little bit about water, okay? In my organization, I should say, the Turtle Conservancy protects lands around the world in many countries. We bought the largest tract of land in Mexico probably ever purchased, 50,000 acres that sequesters- that sequesters carbon that helps with climate change issues, okay? So, I want to talk about Ojai for a minute and water. Where does most of the water go in California, okay? Do you guys know, most of the water in California?
Agriculture.
Eighty percent of water goes to agriculture. Where does most of the water go in the Ojai Valley? We're a microcosm of California. We're a very good example. Probably around eighty percent of water in Ojai goes to agriculture, golf courses, and people's landscaping. I spoke today to talk about water. I spoke today to the head, the president of Senior Canyon Water Company, and he said to me, quote, "Inside a house, it's peanuts how much water we use." Okay? The water we use is your garden, your lawn, your plants, and agriculture is the elephant in the room in Ojai. So, to be talking about water as it relates to, this hotel is so disingenuous and flawed because we are going to be using less water than our predecessors. We are, rain capture water. How much does it rain anymore? Hardly at all. It's minute, right? Rain capture, that's significant in other parts of the world. You can capture it. Here, you really can't, right? We had six inches of rain this year. So, we're doing xeric landscaping. We're doing low flush, you know, toilets and all of this kind of stuff. We're doing, we're getting rid of the hardscape, back to parking. We're putting in gravel so it sucks in the water, right? We're doing all of these things, all of these measures to mitigate our water use. We're getting rid of the spa that was at the Oaks that used so much water. Our predecessors used more water than we do. So, the water conversation is a red herring when it comes to the El Roblar Hotel. I just spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars taking an orchard, twenty-seven acres. You guys probably know it. It's called the East End Preserve, okay? Citrus and avocados sucked up so much water. I spent all this money putting back oak trees, native sycamores. I brought in the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy. We put our money where our mouths are. What have these people done, other than talk, okay? We are a model, what we did in the East End, to what people can do to change orchards and the elephant in the room, where all the water's going, okay? So, it's really hard for us to sit here and listen to this water conversation and other misinformation, parking included, and other issues, when these are just people talking and they don't do anything. We act with urgency because we have to today because of climate change, because of eridification, okay? So, to use this hotel as some kind of talking point about water is disingenuous. And so, I'd leave it with that.
Thank you.
Just want to say one last point. Hard act to follow, but this, we have many people who have dialed in tonight on Zoom, some here, our professional services team and consultants on the project, including our water consultant. And I just want to say that the reason, we did have information prepared for the planning commission meeting, it was discretionary. I didn't really think much of it. There was no questions about it. So, we brought it up at that time. So, they are available if anyone has any questions. Joe Madden. We also have a parking consultant, Ginger Anderson, and we have a couple of other individuals under design and construction team, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And now, the appellant will have an opportunity to rebut.
Okay. So, one thing I think that I'd really like to address for a moment is that the project applicants have significant financial resources. Their attorney's here tonight. They've got multiple experts. They've got a lot of people to support them in their process, right? And so, the appellant, on the other hand, we don't have a lot of money in our organization. We don't have an attorney here tonight. We don't have consultants. What we have is our volunteer power, okay? And, you know, I'll just use myself as an example. I'm not retired. I work, okay? I have a daughter to raise, okay? I'm busy. And so, I don't have the time, like some retired people or other people that have a lot of discretionary time, to bird dog this project from day one to year three or wherever we are now, okay? But what I do have the time for is make, to work with others to make really good suggestions on how to make this project better. And I'm tired of being told that we're too late. We're not too late. We're here today, and we've got things to tell you about how to make the project better, and you should listen. Eric, I really appreciate all you've done for the environment. You have a big lever, you know, you've got significant financial resources.
Mr. Francis-
Who's he talking to?
Mr. Francis, could I ask you to stay on the microphone?
Okay.
We need to have this captured for the future.
Okay, so, anyway, Eric, I appreciate you, all you do for the environment, okay? And all this stuff that you're talking about, the Turtle Conservancy, the land preserve, all that is really great stuff. It's part of what made us want to continue talking to you and continue wanting, continue to pursue to the, you know, as long as possible, some sort of settlement agreement. And so, I do want to make the point, though, that the hotel is a different animal than what's happening on the East End, okay? And what we want to see is for the hotel to be the best it can be. So, for example, there's discussion of the event center. So, let's talk about the event center for a minute. So, there's the event center, and then there's an outdoor area that they call spillover, the pool area, okay? So, the present proposal, and this is where the loss of self-parking mostly happens, is to move the wall out of the pool area to the street and take out eleven self-parking spaces that have been there for decades. So, there's a very simple way to bring back self-parking if the applicants want to, okay? And that is to not expand the pool area, which would reduce the intensity of use, which would be a good thing. And you get eleven self-parking spaces that people won't have trouble finding. So, this notion, this assertion that people are going to be circling around looking for a parking space is a joke, okay? The truth is, there's eleven spaces there right now that can stay if they want them to stay. And that would provide self-parking and balance out this thing where we have valet only, and if people are not valet kind of people, they're just going to go on the street. I mean, regardless, people are going to park on the street, no matter what, whether there's some self-parking or not. But let's provide some self-parking for those that want it, those that want to go in and don't want to go through the whole ceremony of valet parking. So, regarding the gray water, okay? Again, I'm not sure why this was not submitted to the planning commission sooner, but it's here tonight. It's great that they have some, you know, they've paid for a consultant to do work on gray water. I don't see how staff can evaluate that and provide a meaningful response to that in two hours, because I think it came in at three o'clock. So, one thing you could do is carve that one out, right? Do a partial approval, right? And allow staff an opportunity to evaluate their plan, respond to it, and see if it needs to be made better, or if it's, it might just be great. But I don't understand why, why we wouldn't at least allow staff an opportunity to take a look at it. Again, we're not asserting that the hotel shouldn't open due to the fact that Ojai has water supply constraints. What we're asserting, and I don't want this to get mixed up and lost in the shuffle, what we're asserting is you guys need to be honest. Get honest about what's going on with our water and make that resolution reflect geophysical reality and the study that's been provided to us by Casitas Water District, which is the water purveyor for the hotel. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, it'll be the, council have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, applicant, or appellant. Go ahead, Susan.
This is for Mr. Summers, I think?
Mayor, just, I would suggest taking the public comment before the questions.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and take the public comment. We have twenty-one here and forty-six on Zoom, so.
Are we going to limit the comment time?
So, I'm going to, I'm going to request that the council limits to two minutes? Okay.
Unless they have something new, then you can use your discretion.
Okay, all right. Well, let's start. We'll begin with, and this is, I'm going to shuffle them, make it fair.
Mayor, I'd suggest starting with the ones in person, then Zoom second.
Yes, yes, okay. We'll start with Summer McComas, and then Cindy Convery, and then Patrick Leibach. Summer?
Did I hear a consensus for two minutes?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, two minutes, yep. I heard these guys, yes? Yes? Okay.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. My name is Summer McComas. I have been a resident of the Ojai Valley since nineteen eighty-nine, a longstanding local business owner. I have raised my daughter here as a single mother, as well as been an active community member for the past twenty years. I have served on various community organizations, from the PTA president at Topatopa Elementary, to serving on our board of our local softball league, to co-founding Minor's Oaks Business and Artists Association, and currently the Ojai Chamber Board President. I am in favor of the El Roblar Hotel to reopen with all of the updates, improvements they have made, to be current with the local zoning and planning requirements. This is not a new hotel. They are reopening the original hotel of Ojai, and the only reason there is an issue with parking that they have solved perfectly is to be updated with the current permitted laws. The Oaks was grandfathered in after these laws were already put in place. I feel valet parking will be a perfect solution to reducing the amount of visitors that do not know our area, trying to find parking on their own, creating more congestion. In my personal experience, when I have valeted my car at a hotel or at, say, an amusement park, Universal Studios, that encourages me to walk or use other means of transportation, such as our trolley, biking, or just walking, as pulling out my car at a valet is much more of a pain. Going through the parking plans, they will not be taking parking, public parking spaces on the streets or in the residential areas. Their employees will be parking in an off-site location and walking to work, leaving their cars off the road for six to eight hours in a lot that they have purchased for this exact reason. And having two or three valet drivers during peak times parking cars onsite, or if needed, off-site in privately-owned lots that are just right behind the building, not crossing Ojai Avenue, will reduce the amount of people driving, taking up public spots, or parking in front of homes in the residential areas behind the hotel. This lot has been used for parking in the past, or this part has not been used for parking in the past.
Thank you, Summer.
So, it is not taking any current spots away from our community, but in fact, open up more spots for local state users.
Thank you, Summer. Okay, next we have Cindy Convery, then Patrick Leibach, and then Brian Akins. And if you all could just keep an eye when the red light goes on.
For the red light. I'll talk fast. Hi, I'm Cindy Convery. You know me, I'm HPC Historic Preservation Commissioner. And I first saw this project twenty-seven months ago with Mayor Sticks. We were invited to look at the review. I was very hesitant about it. We talked, we talked about it, Mary Stick, Mayor Sticks, sorry about that, and I, after the meeting. And we had a conversation about how it would go through the process and be subjected to changes, which is what it did over twenty-seven months. And I attended the planning commission meetings. I was very involved with historic preservation, and I did not see the appellates at any of those meetings. They appeared recently, which I find very strange, because they had all the opportunities over the last twenty-seven months to make their voices heard, to see the changes it's gone through, to see the parking changes. And the planning commission did a lot of work, and they worked with the El Roblar owners to really dial it in and to get it right. And the thing that makes me feel much more comfortable about it is that I know there will be reviews in place. My concern is the events, like weddings every Friday and Saturday night, I'll hear them from my backyard, but I know, I'm going to call one of the owners, and I'm going to tell them, that's, you know, that's a problem for me, and I think I'll be heard. So, I really feel that these owners, who have deep expertise in what they're doing, are the right owners, and they've been, you know, incredibly patient and incredibly willing to do the work to get it right. We worked very hard with historic preservation to get the design option, the right choice for that property in this place for the standards of interior, and the chair of HPC is sitting right here. I think he'll back me up on that. Just an aside, whenever I went to the Oaks, I did have to park on the street because there were no parking places for people in town. You know, I would go get a manicure, I had to drive around and find a place to park. So, just saying, you know, it's not about valet parking, it's just the way it is. And frankly, I don't want people coming from out of town and looking around to find a parking place. I want them to be put away in their own parking place. Because when I was driving here tonight, I was on a lease on Ventura, and some guy with an Orange County license plate made a U-turn right in front of me in the intersection because he didn't know where he was going. So, thank you. I want that guy to hand his keys to somebody who does know where they're going. I think that's really, you know, it's a safe issue. These are safety issues. These, you know, people come from out of town, and I don't even want to talk about that. I shouldn't talk about that. Three minutes? No, it says I still have forty-three seconds. Am I over? Am I done? I'll go. Anyway, you heard me. Thanks.
Thank you, Cindy. Next, we have Patrick Leibach, and then Brian Akins, and then Bill Miley.
Thank you. You got my name about right. My family can't agree on it either, so we're good. Hi, I'm Patrick Leibach, resident of the city of Ojai. I'm not associated with either the developers of the project or with the appellant, and I speak merely as an interested citizen. And I encourage the city council to accept Manager Vega's recommendation and affirm the planning commission's approval of the Hotel El Roblar. I offer this statement in support both of the substance of the specific project and as a procedural matter in support of the city using appropriate process to consider development decisions. Substantively, the proposed site for the hotel has been a hotel longer than any of us has been alive, and it is unfortunate that such a prime property with the potential to generate revenue and create jobs is currently vacant. This is not a proposal to convert open space into commercial property. This is an instance where highly experienced and locally-based developers will renew an existing commercial property that is currently unused, and that I support. On the procedural aspect, anyone reviewing any development proposal could nitpick specific aspects of the design, and that is why the city has a standing planning commission to comprehensively and publicly review such proposals. The planning commission reviewed this project through a series of public meetings with ample opportunity for public input, and after sending that, the project proponents back to the drawing board several times, the commission approved the project approximately a year and a half after the initial permit application was filed. And I find it disconcerting that this process could be upset by a last-minute appeal by an opaque legal entity that does not cite specific objections to the project at issue, that does not even allege appellant would experience any specific harm from the project. I read nothing about parking in the appeal. Regardless of the merits of any objection that could be raised to this project, which, to be clear, have not been raised in the appeal here, the council would do a disservice to the citizens of Ojai by allowing the appellant to use this forum to subvert the public process that the appellant failed to avail themselves of. So, I support residents having a voice, including a dissenting voice regarding development decisions. I want the city to be thoughtful about how it pursues or allows development, but that's only achieved through appropriate process, in this case, a planning commission review. So, I encourage the council to adopt Manager Vega's recommendation and move ahead with ratifying the planning commission's decision to allow the Hotel El Roblar. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Patrick.
Could you repeat your name once more, your last name?
Yeah, certainly. Leibach, spelled L-E-I-B-A-C-H.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Next, we have Brian Akins, then Bill Miley, and then Chris Gardner.
Okay, two minutes. I am the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. As such, when we held a special meeting with the applicants on February twenty-eighth, we took the time to let the people who were speaking speak as long as they wanted. We only had a few, so we were able to give them that. We heard from all sides. We came into that meeting with an open mind. I had no idea where people were going to go. I had no idea where I was going to go, but we listened to both sides. We deliberated, we asked questions. We had Mr. Delvac, who just spoke here, he spoke to us. Again, he looked at his qualifications. Prior to quoting him at the planning commission, I did a bit of a dive on him and found out the extensive experience he has. Couple, two new things that I want to interject. I've been meeting with Tony Thatcher for different things involved with the museum and other things. I met him today because I went out there to talk to him about the downtown historic district proposal, so I've talked to him three times in the last two weeks. And each of those three times, he has pointed out to me that in the eighties, when the El Roblar had events that took place, they hired valets to come in, and they parked the cars anywhere they could find a place to park the cars. Again, that's something Tony Thatcher has reemphasized to me three times in the last two weeks. I also want to go back to Terry Hill. As part of our code, there is a museum representative that's assigned to that. In this case, we picked Terry Hill because he was not involved. Terry Hill, and talking to him, I talked to him for ninety minutes before our meeting. He subsequent sent a letter. subsequent sent a letter. His recommendation, number one recommendation was neither, number two recommendation was to go with option number one, number three recommendation was to go to option number two. So, I leave that information from those two devout, special individuals with you, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Next we have Bill Miley, then Chris Gardner, and then Larry Steingold.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Bill Miley, I've lived here since 1968. I participated actively in the Planning Commission meetings about renovation for the development, and the discussions were thorough. New page. The owners contracted the Sand Deck Consulting Firm, which produced the parking and transportation study, and a study of the day-use visitors. The event center, which will have a capacity of 150 people, no business in Ojai, by city review and approval, is required to have their parking for the maximum potential use. Women's Center, Ojai Playhouse, and the others. The city provides, provides street parking and city parking, and none of the built facilities have to provide full parking for all of the maximum people. Okay, the appellant referenced Casitas Municipal Water District in their public document. The key here is, the Casitas is the one that provides the will service letter, not the city. Also, the second and equally important agency, which they never referenced, is the Ohio Basin Groundwater Management Agency, and their Sustainable Groundwater Management Plan. And they right now say that it's sustainable, but they never asked, never referenced the agency, because they probably don't even know about it. The hotels, the hotel's water use starts with the allocation of the Oaks. They refitted it, know it's going down, and they do a lot of other good things. Okay. Now, I fully support the Planning Commission, please adopt it. And I have one more thing to say, but afterwards, I want to register my concern about the lack of transparency by the city allowing the applicant to come in with a second appeal document on Sunday, two days ago, which never became widely public and unknown to many people. That is not what I call good transparent government. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I do just wanna state, that was posted on the website, just for the record.
Thank you, James. Next, Chris Gardner, then Larry Steingold, then Richard Camp.
Hi, Chris Gardner, city of Ojai. I wanna talk about both the project and the process. Regarding the project, I own the property at 204 North Ventura, so my property is adjacent to the empty lot that they bought and turned into a proposed parking area. I had some concern, I attended one of the meetings of the Planning Commission, the El Roblar team reached out to me, I went toward the site, we had a very good conversation, they agreed to put some mitigations in place, I found it very reasonable, it's not perfect, but it's much better than creating a new bowling alley through another couple of years of delay. So I support the project as it's approved by the Planning Commission. Regards to the process, the appeal to me seems unreasonable, concerned about the tactics, which seem pretty much designed to delay this process. As far as I know, Simply Ojai has not participated in the public process, now they just wanna disrupt it. Who are these people? Megan Bergfist filed the appeal, Leslie Hess wrote a follow-up, both are officers of Simply Ojai, as well as another group called Mindful Citizen, that's working on a new petition to ban valet parking as another delay tactic. Many ways, these groups are reincarnation of something that used to be called Ojai First. Likely, they have some of the same members, they hire the same PR consultants, probably the same lawyers. Tom Francis, who was here today, was mentioned in the appeal, comes to mind as someone from the past. As you recall, I spoke out pretty violently against the tactics of Ojai First, that they are associated with aggressive media attacks, vandalism, spying on neighbors, and finally, the Drone Gate episode that saw an organic farming business chased from town. Ojai First members donated money and services to several council campaigns, some of which went unreported. Now we have Simply Ojai and Mindful Citizen, they have family members that used to be on council, they have officers contributed $2,000 to fund a council member's campaign. Who are they? What do they want? I hope these groups will reveal themselves, let us know who they are. Meanwhile, I urge the council, consider the dozens of citizens who have participated in these public discourse, and demand transparency from some of these organizations that seem intent on corrupting the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next we have Larry Steingold, then Richard Camp, and then Don Theding.
Thank you, I gotta talk fast. I now know these people who I've never met before, so if I run over them, I know who you are, and the other people. I think the whole thing is bogus. I mean, this is a great project, I mean, these people should be furious. Listening to this man's bio regarding water and earth and everything else, he should be livid. And that's just the beginning. Electrical, they're taking more than they, than they had before, I mean, she may, they had less. But this whole process, these people are snipers. Where have they been? They haven't been involved. Who thinks about valet parking? Does anybody ever think about valet parking? Ever? Where? When? That's a red herring. The environmental impact is a red herring. The building's been there for 100 years, there's nothing new. They're using less water, they're gonna use less electric. Parking, they own the lots, they control the lots, they control their own parking. If zoning required more parking, they'd have to get more lots. But where was that for Rancho Inn? Did anybody see the leases? They don't have valet parking, so now there're gonna be people going all over the place, over by the church and over by Rancho Inn. So, I support the project, you should support the project, the public should support the project, and whoever these people are, they better be at the school committee meeting tomorrow regarding the chaparral land, if they're really interested in this. Because there's seven and a half acres there, that's gonna get developed, and if you really have a piece of it, get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Richard Camp is next, then Don Theding, and then Joan Kemper.
Hi, everybody, I'm Richard Camp. I'm the artistic director of Joan Kemper's Ojai Performing Arts Theater, and I'm the former artistic director of the Arts Center Theater. I wholeheartedly support the opening of the El Roblar Hotel, because I believe in tradition, and in preserving the history of our town. I am sensitive to the remarkable heritage that many of our structures embody, and feel fortunate that our community treasures that heritage. For instance, when I was at the Arts Center, it encompassed the 80th anniversary of that theater, so I went back and found out what play opened that theater in 1939, and I revived it in 19, in 2019. It was a lovely way to honor and tie together the theater's heritage. Now, in the same vein, I was researching the hotel, and I found this lovely little 12-sentence, 12-word sentence. "It became a popular dining destination in the 1940s." What a lovely little and delicious thought that is. And for those who might say that the hotel wants to depart from our small-town sensitivity and sensibility, I would say that the owners are doing best to return the hotel to the respect and popularity that it enjoyed in the past, while looking at the future. Shops, which certainly get a boost, and it probably would have a trickle-down effect on the existing restaurants, and that's, I'm excited about that, for a personal reason. I hike every Tuesday with friends, and we try to find a restaurant that's open on Tuesday, and it's a real challenge. So the trickle-down effect would maybe encourage them to open with new visitors. But seriously, businesses and patrons feed off of each other. To illustrate the point, I will use a theater example. Audiences feed off the actors, but the actors also feed off the audience. The more people in the audience, the more energy generated, resulting in more and louder laughs on the comic lines, more empathy and tears for the tragic lines. You can actually feel that energy in the house, it's just so exciting when that happens, and that symbiotic reciprocity makes it a wonderfully richer experience. Just as the vitality of this new hotel will most assuredly enliven the dynamic of our town, I look forward to sharing that energy and sincerely hope that the owners will be allowed to bring that excitement home. Right there.
Thank you, Richard. Next we have Don Theding, then Joan Kemper, and then Tina Brumond. Thank you, oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, what? It moves around.
Tita Braumond.
Braumond.
Brau, Braumond. He says how I say it.
It started.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I hadn't even introduced myself.
Go ahead, I'll start you over.
Don Theding, I'd actually like to begin with a point of order. I have become aware that there exists a four-page memo from Architectural Resources Group, ARG, in response to public comments from the April 6th Planning Commission meeting. These included my comments in the form of a nine-page report that addresses technical, legal, and report issues regarding the design options for this hotel. ARG's memo has not been provided to the public. ARG's memo was not in the staff report. Therefore, it would be wholly inappropriate this evening to approve Design Number One. This information has not been provided to the public. Regarding Design Number One, Design Number One proposes to add a second arcade near the historic Ojai Arcade. Adding an arcade under Design Option One diminishes the significance of the existing landmark arcade, and does not return Hotel El Roblar to its original design roots, the stated intent of this project. An arcade is a series of arches carried by columns. The Ojai Arcade is unique, its perfect, purpose was to hide unsightly storefronts. The arcade is comprised of 24 arches, and Design Option One proposes to add 13 arches. Adding a second arcade near the existing historic arcade would diminish the existing arcade, as seen in the second page of your handout. This concern was acknowledged by the majority of the Planning Commissioners. The original building never had an arcade, or even arches. And the original building design matters, because Hotel El Roblar is historic. It is a contributing resource to the state-designated downtown Ojai Historic District. This is a hearing de novo, which means you are hearing the information anew, and that you have discretion. Both designs, the applicant said they can accept. Both designs offer a covered walkway, support private balconies, and offer shade. Design Two is compatible with the original design, consistent with historic preservation standards, downtown design, and doesn't diminish. So please vote separately on the front facade design, and please vote to approve Design Option Two, or vote to continue this item, to allow for appropriate dissemination of new information. Thank you.
And Mayor, for the next speaker, if I could comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, just to correct the record for the public and the future record, the memorandum from Architecture Resources Group, which is in the form of a letter from Architecture Resources Group to Community Development Director, Lucas Seibert, was received this afternoon, thus it was not in the staff report, and it was provided to the council and the public, it's on the city's website. And it responds to quest, to, in part, to comments raised by Ms. Theding in her letters of both May 10th, which was also provided to the council and the public through the city's website, and her prior letter, I believe, all, May 6th, or, I'm sorry, April 6th, which was in the Planning Commission packet, no, I'm sorry, not in the Planning Commission packet, but on the city's website, and in this packet. So the information has been provided to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I, that's what I was, gonna ask for a clarification.
Okay. Next we have Joan Kemper, then Tina Brumond, and then Bob Kemper.
Good evening. I am Joan Kemper, and I have been a friend of Eric Good's for 20 years, and he and I, during that 20 years, talked about lots of projects, problems, and things going on in Ojai, and it was much to my betterment. I like to do fun projects around the city, and so on, and you probably realize that. In the meantime, after, after the Thomas fire, we were all breathing smoke-filled air, we all were breathing smoke-filled air, and wondering what in the world was gonna happen. We were lucky the city was still standing, but we worried when we heard the hotel was gonna be for sale. And we worried, because who was gonna come, and what was gonna happen? Who was gonna rebuild it? It needed rebuilding. And I think that everybody in this room, and everybody that's listening to me, and everybody in the valley, should thank their lucky stars, that an Ojai person, namely Eric, who came about, and he was able, he and his group were able to buy this property, and had the means to buy it, and the foresight to see what had to be done, and the plans to see. Much has been said about how gorgeous the hotel's gonna be, and was, I'm not gonna get into that, but I'm gonna say, we are so lucky that we have him here, that's willing to go through all this, month after month, meeting after meeting, dollar after dollar, or millions after millions. And I think we need this hotel, after three years it's been closed, we need this hotel. And so I beg, I urge the City Council to reconfirm the Planning Commission's El Roblar plan approval, so that we can get on with this work. They have lots to do, as you know, AC, plumbing, everything, you've heard all this from all the experts, and I'm not one of them. But we need to keep going on this, we need this hotel to reopen. And selfishly, as one of the oldest, oldest people in the village, I would like to be here to, when it opens, so I do hope I'm around to see it open. So let's keep moving.
Thank you, Joan.
That's a, Mayor.
Tina?
That's a living, that's a living treasure. Right there.
Tina, and then Bob Kemper, and then Michael Addison.
I'm Tina Brumond, and I'm here tonight to ask the City Council to take a deeper look at the Planning Commission recommendation and unintended consequences of approving the El Roblar Hotel expansion. The increase in guest rooms, expansion of event center, two-story addition, are beyond the scope of the building business that was there previously occupying this footprint. The reliance of off-site valet parking to enable the expanded development are beyond the scope of the reports presented by the applicant, for instance, the traffic report. This is frustrating to read, a traffic study provided to planning which indicates a one-net car increase in daily travel. This report is not worth the paper it's written on, and any fancy LA movie person can buy any report they want, from any person that they want, to say whatever they want. That's the way America's working right now, right? They spin their proposal, and this project of what's being approved is not adequately captured in the Planning Department's scrutiny of this project. Do we remember Jersey Mike's? Jersey Mike's, even though we had an existing no-chain operation, no-chain law, guess who didn't realize that that was actually a chain? Who didn't realize it? A bunch of people on the Planning Department, and a bunch of people in City Council. Same thing is happening here. Did anyone Google these developers? This is not a like-for-like hotel replacement, not at all. This project, the Oaks, was a three-star hotel. Did any of you do any investigation to figure out what is the draw difference between a five-star hotel and a three-star hotel? Did any of those reports mention anything about that? No. You guys are all approving this stuff, and approving it without asking the deeper questions. There is nuance in here. These people right here are famous for creating exceptional institutions, exceptional bars and nightclubs, exceptional hotels. We are not talking about the dude who's Quality Inn in Camarillo just burnt to the ground. That's not what we're talking about, not one bit. And for this investigation to not be deeper, look, as a community person that's involved, I have to go to a Planning Commission meeting, I have to go to an Ojai City Council meeting, I have to go to a MAC meeting, and I have to go to a Ventura County Supervisor's meeting, just to keep on top of all of this. They can spin this any way they want, they're movie people, don't believe it.
Thank you, Tina. And I'm gonna ask, excuse me. I'm gonna ask the audience to please have some decorum and civility and respect for all people. And a reminder that the finger pointing is the problem, so if we could all learn to get along and listen to each other at a respect. Thank you. Okay, next we have Bob Kemper, Michael Addison, and Leslie Hess.
Before we start my clock, I've got a signed petition I'd like to put into the record, if I could. This was signed by 26 business owners or managers in the arcade this afternoon, all in support of the parking and the El Roblar. So my name is Bob Kemper, I live at 172 El Camino Drive, and I'm here in support of the approval of the hotel. I've lived here for 25 years, I am appalled at this process, I am appalled at what has happened in the last couple of weeks to try to put this project, to delay it further. There are not many buyers who would make this purchase, the restoration is incredibly expensive due to the age of the hotel, and getting through our Planning Commission, thank God, is not an easy task. The Cliffs were lucky enough to find a group who would purchase this hotel and maintain the historic features, and they have a strong environmental impact and focus on the community, as you've heard. They've developed a fully conforming business plan that has now been unanimously approved by the Planning Commission, they have increased available parking, in fact, actually added nine net spaces. They're going to bring significant revenue into the city, tax revenues into the local retail outlets, it'll be another hotel for friends. It'll be another hotel for friends and family to stay at in its downtown, walk to everything, no driving necessary. The local merchants desperately need the tourist revenue, as do the restaurants, and we need these places open. We have this group that's ready, willing, and able, so why are we even here? The reason we are here is that we do have, in this town, a new group of people who would rather kill our town than deal with the challenge of progress and control change. These people want to shut Ojai down with preferably no hotels, no restaurants, no bars, no tennis tournament, no music festival, no nothing, no kidding. That's not the Ojai I want. I want a vibrant, live community with options for restaurants, theater, music, all surrounded by our environmental oasis. We have the votes to approve that. That's not why I'm here. I'm here to encourage all Ojai residents to please review the candidates in November very carefully. Who we select will have a major impact on this community. We need to save Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have Michael Addison, then Leslie Hess, and then Griff Barkley.
Hello, my name is Michael Addison. I've lived in Ojai for the past 11 years, but I have pretty deep Ventura County roots. My family moved to Ventura in 1951 from South Africa, escaping apartheid. And my parents were deeply engaged in that community until their death. When I moved here, I became engaged in this community, as I have elsewhere where I've lived. I've served as a member of the Board and President of the Ojai Education Foundation, and for eight years on the Ojai Arts Commission. And what I love about Ojai stems from my first experience of Ojai. When I was in high school in Ventura, I managed to land a job as a lifeguard at Matilah Pool in the summer. This was in the early '50s. And one of those summers, and God knows why I did this, I also managed to land a job as a busboy at The Oaks Hotel. And I would hitchhike down from Matilah Pool, I didn't have a car, at the end of my shift there, and then work for five or six hours at The Oaks, and then hitchhike back up to Matilah, where I had a bunk. And that was my experience of The Oaks, a vibrant hub within the community, with people both visiting, either as tourists or as family members of local residents, or people in Ojai just enjoying a night out at a lovely restaurant and a bar. That has been missing in this community for the past three years. And the diligence of the Planning Commission, and the work that has gone into this by those who are proposing this, is to be applauded, as is this process of a public airing of an appeal that frankly, I think is very flimsy. And I hope the Commission will recognize the validity of what's been proposed, the changes that have been incorporated in that, and bring this treasure back into our community by approving the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Leslie Hess, then Griff Barkley, and then Drew Mashburn.
Good evening. My name is Leslie Hess. I'm on the Board of Directors of Simply Ojai, which is a registered nonprofit with the IRS. And you can look it up on Charity Navigator, and it will be there. There's no conspiracy, there's no connection with any other group. We appealed this Planning Commission decision because it is the only option available to members of the public if they believe that the unelected Planning Commission made an unsound decision. There are a lot of people that live in Ojai who are very concerned about the flimsy parking plan for the El Roblar Hotel. Even the lawyer, earlier in his letter, admitted that the parking leases, the lease and the sublease, could be terminated with, quote, "a 12-month notice to terminate," which is ample time for the applicant to obtain other parking. Where is there another parking lot within the 500-foot radius required by our municipal code? So that's the problem. And I think you will find that a lot of people in the public are having a problem with that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Leslie. Next, we have Griff Barkley, then Drew Mashburn, and then Barbara Bowman.
I'm Griff Barkley. Born and raised in Ventura County. Went to high school in Ojai, moved away, and came back and have moved my family back here. I have three daughters that go to school here in Ojai. Frankly, this is one of the most beautiful projects in downtown Ojai that I've seen, and I wholeheartedly support the project as proposed. The tactics that I'm seeing are kind of, unfortunately, you know, I understand why they would bring something up like this to try to stop this, but it's unfathomable. They have, I've developed projects in Ventura County, and I know how hard it is to get projects approved. These gentlemen have been very patient. They have worked diligently. Their sustainability efforts, the, I'm a downtown business owner in Ojai, and I'm darn excited to get some walking traffic through town. I don't think this is going to create any extra traffic. In fact, I think it's going to improve traffic by creating the parking situation that they're doing. So I just would like to say that I support it, and thank you guys for creating such a beautiful project in downtown Ojai. And selfishly, I'm really excited to use your facilities and dinner and drinks. Thank you.
Thank you, Griff. Next, we have Drew Mashburn, then Barbara Bowman, and then Wendy Hilgers.
Hi, my name's Drew Mashburn. I'm days short of being a 71-year Ojai Valley native. Can't believe that. I presently live in Miners Oaks, but I've lived within Ojai city limits at several different locations over the years. I'm not all opposed to letting the storied Hotel El Roblar reopen. I'd like to see it reopen. It's storied because it has history behind it. Therefore, its historical aspects need to be safeguarded by those of us that so enjoy our treasured old buildings and other old structures in our unique downtown business district. Edward Drummond Libby's vision of the main downtown block was one that great, that was graced by the arches of the arcade, pergola, and the post office, which he had built before the Ojai Inn, which is now the Hotel El Roblar. I suspect, had Mr. Libby desired arches to run along the south facade of the hotel, he would have instructed his architects, Mead and Requitt, to include them in the design. He did not do so. I believe this was for the purpose of not diminishing the uniqueness of the arches in his special trifecta of the arcade, pergola, and post office. The state historic, the state of California has designated our downtown as the Downtown Ojai Historic District, and included the Hotel El Roblar as a historic resource in that district. The city is in the process of developing their own downtown historic district that, to my understanding, will be larger than the state's. Bravo. Because of these designations, I feel the buildings and structures within them must be true to form as the original design. Therefore, I cannot support Design Option One with its, in my opinion, Taco Bell look along the south facade of the hotel. I do support Design Option Two, which is more of what Libby, Mead, and Requitt envisioned. I realize the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission have spent considerable time making their suggestions and recommendations to the City Council, but the two commissions, in my opinion, have made a humongous mistake concerning Design Options One and Two. I support Design Option Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Next, we have Barbara Bowman, then Wendy Hilgers, and then Tom Francis.
Well, a lot has been said tonight. Barbara Bowman's happy to be here and add a little bit more to it. I think we should talk about some fiduciary responsibility. And one of them is that the fact that they have not been collecting any tote taxes. All these delays are making that tote tax not coming into the city that much longer. And I think with them having to fund a $7 million mandatory state pension, at the rate they're going, it's going to take them 70 years to pay it off unless they take the next five years and devote all of that tote to that mandatory pension. But as long as you keep delaying this and throwing up obstacles which aren't real, that don't exist, you delay that tax coming in. The last two years has been a tremendous amount lost. What do they figure, a million five a year? That's a lot of money to the state. And that's a huge amount to the city to pay off their debt. So, I mean, everything else that's been thrown up is a red herring. I agree. And that's been repeated. The parking, the water, it's ridiculous, it's silly. I mean, it's like, no, it was the last thing, a memo? I mean, if I stay here all night, I'm sure there'll be three or four new things dumped up. But this hotel needs to get open, and it needs to be able to start rebuilding. And anybody that holds it up, I mean, again, how many more red herrings can we come up with? I mean, this is ridiculous. None of the other applicants years ago ever went through this with the hotel. They never went through this. We all know that. I mean, the Cluffs never had to go through any of this, even when Dave Brury redid the front of the hotel. So perhaps that's because you weren't mayor then. I don't know. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Next, we have Wendy Hilgers, then Tom Francis, and then Vicki Carlton-Burn.
Hi. Thanks so much for the opportunity. I just wanted to tell a little story. In December 1968, we received a call from a shirt-tail relative in Ojai who lived on a ranch. They had major damage due to the storms. We were in the process, in vista, of growing flowers. We also were damaged and trying to think what to do. So we agreed, we bought a dump truck, a tractor, and a trailer, and in January 1969, we moved onto the ranch. We lived there and worked there for over a year and a half. When that work was done, we moved down into town, found a rental, and shortly after a few years or so, we found a house where we still live, on Park Road. And after that, my husband worked to try to establish himself beyond the work we had done before. And he became a friend, a long-life-term friend of Mel Krog, who invited us into his welding shop. I worked there, and Mel helped Chris to work with him and for him, introduced him to so many people around town, and that was the start of Chris's solitary career, which was great. Obviously, at that time, we didn't have much time, and we certainly didn't have much money. But one of the things we absolutely loved was when they told us about The Oaks Hotel, how you could, the community was involved in that, it was a welcoming place, and we would go there very happily with many friends, meeting the people who stayed, our friends who were there, were dancing and listening to Lynn Hansen and Debbie Cowgill singing. We did that many times, loved it, always felt welcome there. We talked to people. My husband loved to visit with people, met people who were staying there. We would often see, as we walked around town, some of those people who were staying at the hotel. Absolutely loved it. And I think the greatest thing about it was that we always felt welcome there. We could go in and look at the beautiful artwork, have a drink, or visit friends who were staying there. Anyway, I think that's just what, if my husband were standing right here, he would say, this, we are so lucky to have this group of people. They are the A-Team. That would be Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Next, we have Tom Francis, then Vicki Carlton-Burn, and then Kathy Kluff.
And Madam Mayor, my strong recommendation would be that Mr. Francis, having spoken as the appellate's representative, does not get a second bite at the apple.
And I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Who said that?
He elected to speak as the appellate's representative instead of his public commenter, and certainly had plenty of time.
All right, Vicki Carlton-Burn, and then Kathy Kluff. There's one that's unsigned, if anybody is still reading. Vicki? Kathy Kluff?
Hello. Kathy? Hello. I'm Kathy Kluff. I'm the former president and CEO of The Oaks at Ojai, and I'd like to give a little background on the operations, just to provide some comparisons to the El Roblar. I had 125 employees. We operated 24/7/365 for over 40 years, with little to no negative impact on Ojai. The majority of our guests came from LA by car. We had a two-night minimum stay. We had 49 guest rooms, three of which we converted to treatment rooms. And we had an 80-seat dining room. Unlike the typical hotel, Destination Spas like The Oaks sell a program, not a room. This leads to an interesting practice that Destination Spas do, which is room sharing. We put two strangers in a room that is a double occupancy. This system works surprisingly well, and it allowed us to accommodate up to 90 guests a night. This did mean that for each shared room, two cars traveled into Ojai. When it came to selling The Oaks, I heard from an outpouring of interested parties, locally, throughout the US, and internationally. It was almost hard to keep up with it. Some of the guidelines that we used for the selection were, will they provide jobs for locals? Will they supply significant bed tax to the city? Are they interested in preserving some of the historic beauty that we loved? Ramin and his group fulfilled all of that, actually more. They had skin in the game. They were local. They had kids growing up here. We even turned down a larger monetary offer from another party because they missed those points. Needless to say, that party was not only upset, but surprised. What I have not heard in the multitude of meetings on the El Roblar project is that it will diversify the city's income stream. Right now, all the golden eggs are in one basket, that of the Ojai Valley Inn. They are the only significant revenue source for the city. Thankfully, right now, we have them. Everyone knows it is not fiscally prudent to have a city dependent upon one business. The El Roblar stands to bring in around $90,000 a month in taxes collected from tourists to support mostly us, locals. Their money goes to help us.
Thank you, Kathy.
Could I just end it?
Sure.
I just wanted to say that we, the Kluff family, we have given significant time, money, and resources to Ojai. And I expect the El Roblar group will continue that partnership with the city, if you let them. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak who didn't sign? Steve?
And as he comes to the podium, I'll caution the Planning Commission chair to be cautious in your remarks, as the matter might be remanded back to the Planning Commission, and thereby to not prejudge anything that would be decided. But you can speak as to the past freely.
Is it okay if I speak to the appeal, or the basis of the appeal?
Because the matter might be remanded back to the Planning Commission, I would recommend not commenting on that. You'll have a role in that category if the matter is remanded to the Planning Commission, which is perhaps unlikely, but possible.
For the record, I'm Steve Quilisi. I'm currently Chair of the Planning Commission, but that could change in another month. I think we have elections coming. I urge you to approve the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission and the decision of the Planning Commission on this case. I have heard a lot of misstatements tonight, and I have to say that I think a lot of them come from ignorance of the process and the testimony that we've heard in the past. Ms. Hess, Mr. Francis, and Ms. Burkwest never appeared at any Planning Commission meeting. I don't know if they ever showed up at an HPC meeting. But I think that some of the misstatements that have been dumped on you tonight have come from a lack of understanding of the process that this case has already been through. And I urge you all to pay more attention to the process and the extensive public comment that has already taken place in the Historic Preservation Commission meeting and in multiple Planning Commission meetings.
And Madam Mayor, I might suggest if we use this opportunity to ask anyone on Zoom who wants to speak to raise their hand, using the raised-hand feature, so we'll know who the cue is there.
Okay. First, we have John Merk, and then Jamie, help me, and then Sean. Okay. John?
Good evening. Yeah. I'm John Merk, Mayor Styx, council members, and Mr. Quilisi, and everybody's here tonight. I also wanted to acknowledge Joan Kemper and Wendy Hilgers. I think they've done more for this city than the rest of us combined in this room. Anyway, I live outside of Place, and I was a Planning Commissioner for 20 years. And I just want to say, you know, a city is a living thing. It has to evolve, has to adapt and change. And this project looks spectacular to me in terms of how well it's going to do for the city. And I urge you to approve it and let the developers get on with their business. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Jamie, I can't, it starts with a P. Piven? Oh, sorry.
James Poulsen, I think.
Okay, James Poulsen, yes.
Sorry. And I'll be brief. James Poulsen, I'm CFO at Thatcher and also treasurer at the Senior Canyon Water Company. I've had the pleasure of working with Mr. Good and Jeremy McBride for a number of years. And, you know, I just feel like this is kind of a no-brainer, that this is so good for the town, and I don't understand why they're going through these issues. And I say that only because I've gone through these issues in the past with different bodies like yours. But it's just super tough to watch. So anyways, I appreciate it. I know it's super tough on your side of the desk, but, you know, from where I sit, it is a no-brainer.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Next, we have Sean Alakant, Alashant.
Hello. Thank you, Council, for all your time and all this you went through tonight. We really appreciate all this. I wanted to start with 32 years of experience on the property. We can start with parking. Parking has been an issue with open to the public, where it's not controlled by Valet. We never tried Valet when I worked at the property over the 32 years. But it would have been a great help, because we would have people park into the parking lot to go to the Rubens Barito back in the day, or go shopping, go to the movie theater, go across the street to the restaurant, that now, I forgot the new name of the restaurant. But anyways, we would have guests show up, and there was no parking. We'd have to unload their luggage and then show them how to park on the back street when it was a limited parking in some areas. So it'd be great for a guest to show up to a quality hotel and have a parking space ready for them, and to walk away from their car. And to bring up the point that Lady brought up earlier, you can put their car away, and they don't have to drive in circles and search for a parking space that someone else took that's not even a registered guest of the hotel. And far as water goes, from day one, Ramin has reached out to me and said, hey, let's shut the sprinklers down as much as we can. We had them running prior, I think, three times a week to keep everything lush, but we've hand-watered everything now and reduced a lot. They're going to reduce even more with their drought-resistant landscaping. And then again, this is drug out for almost three years. Can you imagine? People bring up, they have the financial means to do this, and they can hire all these people and these experts, because they're responsible. They've done things to become financially in the position they're in to do this great hotel. And you've just got to look at it on their side, too. This is a, with the inflation and everything that's happened over the last two years, they're going to absorb like a 30% to 40% increase in this whole project. Lumber, materials, everything, labor. You know, you have to be able to pay the bills this house to pencil out. So this thing needs, this project needs to be approved and to move forward. And we appreciate your time. And I think it's time to move forward with this project as soon as we can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sean. Next, we have Ivana Karopulzik, maybe? And then Matt Goodwin, I believe. Ivana? Nope. Matt? Okay. Hi.
Thank you, Council. My name is Matt Goodwin. Just want to express my support, like many other people, tonight. I think, just reiterating what a lot of people said, you are talking about an existing hotel that has been there for 100 years, that we really cannot emphasize enough the stewards and locals of this property who are bringing it to life, and have gone through three years of good city and public discourse to get it to this point. I think it's very easy to throw out these red herrings, as everyone is saying, but this team has a group of actual specialists and technical analysts, as well as their own experience through environmental conservation. So the notion of water use and natural resources through the redevelopment of this property, I would look to them for their expertise, not coming in here and throwing out something without any basis. In addition to that, the parking notion, the whole intent of Valet is to be more efficient and more sustainable. And I mean, you can hear the previous gentleman who's worked there for 30 years who would have begged for it. So I think looking at the facts, looking at the property, looking at the stewards and the processes, this is already gone. It's kind of a no-brainer to support this project and move forward with the approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right, that's it for public comment. Now we'll go to Zoom. Public comment?
So I see three people on Zoom who have their hands raised. If there's anyone else in the Zoom room who would like to speak, please use the raised-hand function now, and I will start calling on the people who do have their hands raised. First, we have Craig Walker. Mr. Walker, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. You're muted. There you go. Okay.
I want to state upfront that I fully appreciate and I support the reopening of the El Roblar Hotel. My only request is that you approve Design Option Number Two as a condition of your approval of this project. As you know, the state of California recently listed downtown Ojai on the California Register of Historic Places. The El Roblar Hotel is a historic building and a historic resource for the state, the city, and possibly even the nation. Simply put, it should be treated like one. Over the years, the arcade, post office, pergola, and Catholic Church have all been faithfully restored to their former glory, given it one of the most beautiful and historic civic centers in the country. Why would we not want the remodel of the El Roblar facade to also be consistent with its historic design? Yes, historic commercial buildings sometimes need to be upgraded. No one objects to the new owners adding a second-floor balcony that will add space to the upstairs rooms. But that can and should be done in a way that preserves the historic character of the building. The historic consultant hired by the city to review the project found that Design Option Number Two meets all accepted standards for historic rehabilitation, while Design Option Number One does not. Design One adds a new inappropriate historical feature, a long arcade that is inconsistent with the original design of the hotel and competes with the historic arcade in the next block. The consultant found that Option Number Two is more consistent with accepted standards of historic rehabilitation. The applicant submitted two facade designs, Option Number One and Option Number Two. At the Planning Commission meeting, they said they could make either option work. Option Number Two, the pergola design, could be planted with wisteria or bougainvillea vines.
Hello? Craig Walker, too?
Okay. Can we go ahead and finish? Yeah, go ahead, finish, Craig, please.
One surrounded the building. It would look beautiful and also would shade the building behind it. So just to sum up, I ask that you put the condition of approval that Design Option Number Two be used. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig.
Next, we have Leland Womsky. Mr. Womsky, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. And please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead. Mr. Womsky, if you're there. Oh, there he goes.
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, okay. It's Womslie. And I'm the project landscape architect. And so I just wanted to speak to a few things. First of all, my family's had a professional relationship with Ojai for just over 100 years. My grandmother's firm, landscape architecture firm, was the first landscape architecture firm in California. And she was the original landscape architect with Wallace Neff at what is now the Ojai Valley Inn. And I was there for over a decade, doing the herb suite pools, the indigo pools, a number of courtyards, et cetera. So I wanted to speak first to water usage. And I am a lead accredited professional through the US Green Building Council, which is to say that I have a great reverence for sustainability. And I wanted to mention that, you know, there's quite a bit of impervious paving there currently. And our plans include just under 14,000 square feet of permeable paving to recharge the water table. Downspouts and drainage will be directed under the parking to stormwater chambers that will further recharge the water table. We did request non-potable treated wastewater from Casitas Water, but they said that's not available currently. So that was out, but we did try. We really wanted to do that. I also wanted to mention that there are quite a few grasses there, that almost 30% of the landscape is grasses. Most are natives, and then quite a few other grasses that are native to Morocco's Atlas Mountains, which is to say the northern Sahara Desert. We can also absolutely use some of the gray water, you know, perfectly happy to explore some of that. But I also wanted to mention the trees. We're including natives, edibles, particularly citrus, and then city-defined street trees. So there's quite a bit of shading, which means less heat island effect. And that heat island effect, many of you may know, contributes to climate change. The shading requirements per Cal Green for the parking areas are 50% is required, and we're actually shading 58% of the parking areas. As far as hardscape areas, 20% is required. We're shading almost 62% of the hardscape areas. And then as far as landscape areas, we're shading 51% when only 20% is required. So also, the gentleman, the appellate, he mentioned parking and, or the pool cabanas on the west side of the property. Where currently, there's parking, which is impervious. We're planning on demoing all that and actually putting in a number of native, large-established native.
Sorry, time. Can you wrap it up?
Okay, just, yeah. We're planning on using quite a few native oak trees, 17, I believe. And we are leaving every native tree, and we're getting rid of all the non-native invasive trees. So, you know, all in all, it's quite sustainable.
Thank you, Leland.
Next, we have Carol Avalon. Mr. Avalon, if you're there, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, or Ms. Avalon. I, if you're there, go ahead and unmute yourself. There. Okay. There, looks like you're on. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
There you go. Okay, you can go ahead and speak.
I didn't even know my name was on, on the list, but thank you for offering me this opportunity. I believe that change is good. Change is happening all the time, and a city is vitalized by change that occurs. So I just wanted to speak to that and say that it's inevitable. It happens every day in all of our lives. Change occurs, and this is a good thing. It keeps things moving and alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
And I don't see any more hands raised.
Okay, wonderful. Well, go ahead and close the public comment, and we will close the hearing. And let's take a quick break, and we'll come back for discussion and questions. Thank you.
Please mute your mics.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible][1639.01]
Bicycle, take the trolley, and there's all kinds of other alternative transportation coming down the pike. So, I, and, and if it turns out that there are issues with the valet parking that we can't predict everything, I'm confident that the hotel owners will, will handle that. And that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Randy?
I know we're all sitting, which is a good thing because what I'm going to say is I'm in absolute agreement with what Souza just said. That's all I have to say. Um, no, I, I would, um, you know, it is a complex issue, no doubt about it. We've, we've put these gentlemen through the Ojai ringer, and hopefully after tonight they'll come out in one piece and, and we can heal and we can move forward. I too respect anyone who comes to a community meeting and has a different opinion or a different view or perspective of what we're trying to do. In fact, everyone knows me, I believe in public comment, and I believe that we have more of this, this discourse so that we understand what we would like to see our community be, and more importantly is how we can work together to achieve it. So I applaud the group, what are they, Simply Ojai? I applaud them for, for coming together and, and realistically putting their views forward and also reaching out to, to the appellants and, and the applicants, and also for the applicants to even listen to them. They didn't have to. They could have said, "You're nobody. You, you know, you have plenty of opportunity." But instead, they reached out and, and they, they continued the dialogue probably even up to today. So, the process works. It isn't always perfect. It isn't always timely, but I'll tell you what, it works and it works for our community.
Ryan or me? Ryan, you want to go next?
I'll, I got it. Uh, you want to go, Ryan? Or, you ready?
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, Bill.
I, um, I also agree with Souza. And I think that, huh? Oh, well, yeah, I, I want to make a couple of points. Quickly. I think that this process, I, I am, I am always absolutely impressed with this community. We have these events, we have these hearings, we listen to one another. I've also watched every single moment of the Historic Preservation Commission and the various Planning Commission deliberations and proceedings. And after all of that, tonight, I still learned things I didn't know. That's just amazing. It's wonderful. And I thank everyone here for coming. To me, this thing boils down to a responsible group of people that have stepped up with a vision, with the capital to pursue that vision, and the, accepting the responsibility of taking a non-conforming use and making it conforming, to restore a panoply of activities that used to be here. It's actually a restoration of a set of uses that used to be in Ojai at this facility. And in effect, it's a, but bringing it into modern standards. That is, um, you know, that's what we celebrate here. Evolution of good design, positive vision, it's what we cherish. It's why we're here in cherishing this community. It's what happened 100 years ago plus. And so I look at things like the valet parking, and I analyze it and think about it and realize that the shift in how we think about parking and how we think about traffic is shifting from a level of service to vehicles' miles traveled, and I know that's kind of technical wonky stuff, but basically it means that this whole shift is going to look at the behavioral design of the facility to reduce vehicles' miles traveled, and this valet parking does that, in my opinion. We look at the issue of the use of resources, and I have to say, I didn't hear the appellant refute the recently submitted exhaustively detailed and thought-through groundwater sustainability plans for both of our aquifers and groundwater sustainability agencies in this valley and the urban water management plan of the Casitas Municipal Water District. I didn't see them there, I didn't see them questioning, I didn't see them questioning the extensive discussion tonight, in terms of those plans that have been exhaustively showing over all the data that we have going back decades and decades and decades and decades with professional climate change adjustments that we are managing sustainably, subject to continuous adaptation. So, to think, to say that we are being false without evidence, I find somewhat disturbing. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is that what I see is, what I see in total is what's being presented for us tonight is in fact in the service to the best traditions of this community, and I support it.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to Eric, Jeremy, Ramin, and I think there was a Warner I also heard who didn't speak. Thank you, all of you, for enduring what I know has been a difficult effort. I'm well aware of the process that we make you jump through to try and get this far, and you got a little extra hoop to jump through with an appeal. We make it hard on purpose in Ojai, let's be clear. Everybody knows that. Developers, investors, everybody knows it's not easy in Ojai. I've had dozens of people call my office before, and the usual answer is, "You're not going to get it done, it's not going to work, and you're not the right party for it." It's very, it's very difficult, and it takes a lot of wherewithal to get here. But I also always say that when we get things in Ojai that fit into that very thin area that we do feel is right for Ojai, and this is not just what I think is arguably right for Ojai, but it's been here longer than the city's been incorporated, and it is a modernization of an old asset, not a new construction, which is very different. You know, it's, it's great to see that a lot of the new ideas and new feelings and thoughts that we incorporate into something that's old can be brought into something new. I've heard a lot of times today that nobody wants to, neither side wants to stop the opening and the development of the hotel, but that there's a lot of things they want to have changed. But let's remember that had the old hotel continued as was, it would have 45% more water usage, it would have significantly less parking space, it would have all the old problems from the old days that wouldn't be updated into an upgraded, integrated new hotel that has a lot of checkboxes for being better than what we had before. And if we are really trying to get hotel open, then it makes sense that we're getting a better version of it open. To me, valet parking makes sense. It makes sense specifically on that property. I live nearby, I work nearby, I've been there a million times. Dawn and Sheila Clough are dear friends of mine. I appreciate the Clough family effort in all this. I spoke to them about it before as well, and they did ensure that they were handing the baton of this institution in Ojai off to some entity group that they trusted, and I think that's really important, too. There's a reason why a couple blocks up, there's a park with their name on it. That's not, uh, that is not a, that is not to be lost on our community. They did not turn their back and hand it off to someone that the community couldn't work with or that they didn't trust personally, because it would shine poorly on their legacy that stays intact, I believe, with the new ownership that's there. And that's a very important thing. In addition to that, the, you know, the, the water issue, I, I know an awful lot about water in this valley, and we're talking about having to balance our interests, and we get it. We're not in great water surplus shape, but we keep, I've heard people talk about the lake, this water they're going to use predominantly doesn't come from the lake, it comes from the aquifer. Our aquifer's been managed very well over multiple decades. This is not the type of water usage in a hotel situation that is going to significantly impede our ability to be able to survive later on. It's going to be, as was said before, significantly higher water users that are going to be an issue. So I just feel that that has been an issue, along with this parking situation, that have been manipulated and frankly spun politically into something it's not. I've heard red herring, I've heard confusion, I've heard a lot of things. I even heard a quote, and Bob Kemper, I appreciate this, and Joe, thank you for being here as well, that a new group would rather kill our town. Well, it does feel like that. I, I heard Randy give some respect, but I got to say, this is a step too far. I don't have a problem with an appeal, but I do have it when it doesn't feel like it's disconnected from a campaign. It feels like this is an appeal designed to score political points for one of our council members, because most of the people who spoke in support of the appeal, not in support of the hotel, are all connected in some way back to one of our campaign, one of our groups. And that feels very icky to me. It doesn't feel like Ojai to me. We make it really hard to jump through these hoops. We have made all the hoops difficult. They're narrow, they're far apart, but this group has gone above and beyond to make sure that they jump through all of those. I have an enormous amount of trust in the things I've heard tonight about why, how, and what they're going to do. From that the event center's actually a little smaller, to why valet parking makes sense, to why we, to, to water reduction, to additional extra steps that when there was some confrontation and conflict over their plan, they took the extra step to meet with the appellants, which they didn't have to do, to try and incorporate some of their ideas into everything. This is in the narrow area of what's right. We have the right ownership at the right place, we're not changing something from what it was, we're reinvigorating it, and it feels like that they unfortunately fell into a political trap, not a realistic trap. And I apologize to the applicants for having to jump through all those extra hoops, because I think you already got there at planning. And I don't have a problem with getting an appeal, but I do have a problem with some of the rationale behind it, because to say you're not against the project, you just want a little tweak here or there, but at the same time, individuals are trying to circulate a petition to eliminate all valet parking in Ojai, and using this as kind of the argument that there's some massive movement to start valet parking all over town, that's the disingenuous part. It's not the part about the water. The disingenuous part is that this project's valet parking is somehow so abhorrent to the local community that, as you've seen, the local merchants support it, the neighbors support it. Heck, there's almost everybody but a small, tiny group that don't support it, turning it into a thing that's supposed to be about the entire city having valet parking, and nobody is realistically talking about that. We're not passing a rule to allow it, we take this on an ad hoc basis, and this is a very unique situation for 100-plus-year-old property that in order to modernize, doesn't have the footprint in the block they're in to be able to do anything but valet parking in order to ensure that they have the parking they needed that they didn't have for the last 50-plus years. So I think it's a very creative and ultimately expensive way to fix the problem, and they've been willing to do that. I do have a question, ultimately, about whether it's going to be free valet or cost valet, because I do have some concern about if people are going to be pushed off of the property if there are events there. But I also know that this parking idea, and we've looked at it a lot, we've, we have no problem filling up for the Fourth of July, getting enough parking for the Fourth of July for Ojai Day, for a number of other events. We have no restricted surface street parking, except for one small area on Montgomery and Matilhui, I believe. Other than that, there's no permits required, there's very little restricted parking. So filling up the neighborhoods has not really been an issue, and I don't think it's a, we don't want it every day, but it's not the end of the world if it's temporary. Even when the museum has, has events across the street from my office, a block from my house, they, there's massive amounts of surface street parking that's used, and I don't hear anybody complaining because the museum is using it. If this wasn't a tourism umbrella business, I don't think we'd have all the red herrings and the confusion and people saying they don't understand it. I think that's really the impetus of what's going on here, and I get that there is a overall feeling in Ojai that we're over-visited. But the Oaks and the future of the Arobor are not the, this is not the place to make our stand. This is not the place to make a stand about that, about tourism, or about water. This is not the last effort of water usage that's going to break the camel's back and change our community forever. So, I appreciate everything in the nuances of the design of the hotel, in the efforts, the costs, the things they've tried to do to make these things more efficient, more palatable, less intrusive, for a property that, let's remember, already existed and was there before the city was incorporated itself. So I applaud them for that, and thank the community for coming out in full, and I hope that everyone is understanding the awkwardness of this weird push out of some, a very small minority of our community members to try and really twist some small issues in a good project to, I think, highlight things that they're trying to use for their own personal gain. That's not what this is about. I support this project because it's good for Ojai, and I think they've done everything they can to make it really work in the area they are and be incorporated into what is not only going to be beneficial monetarily, but I think is really going to be an asset to the community, and continue on the legacy of the cost, which is a very important thing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, it's a first, because I agree with all four of my council members in that I really respect and love this process, the democratic process, and, and that's a first. So thank you all for respecting that, and this is how democracy works, so it's a beautiful thing. And the civil engagement. And I'm ecstatic about the Watershed Progressive report that we got today at three, you know, so many opportunities and possibilities, so that's, that's wonderful, and I am grateful to Ramin and Warner and Eric and Jeremy for your beautiful plans and all this beautiful work that you've done for so long. It's, and I completely support the hotel opening. I think it's going to be a great asset to our community. I also think it's really important that we, as a community, understand what's happening and take in all the information. And of course, it's slow, democracy is slow. And in terms of the new material that we received today, I think it's really important that the staff has time to review it, as was suggested. And we don't have adequate water, you know, we clearly do not. We're at stage four drought, heading towards stage five. There's no prediction of rain particularly, and we've got to start looking at everything through a whole different lens, a water lens. And, and so, I really see the hotel as having the opportunity to be a beacon of sustainability, to be the best it possibly can be in terms of environmentalism, and really show the world how it's done in terms of, in terms of being green. So, I think we just all need to take in, take into consideration Mother Nature, geophysics, because we can't control her, we've got to work with her. So, what I would like to see is that we give it back to staff, bring it back to the May 24 City Council meeting, so that's not very much time, and to allow staff, you know, I, I really feel strongly that we need to model decorum and civility. Now, that's democracy. Thank you. This is my opinion, you know, because we don't have the water, and we, and this, you know, attachment A, page 5G, there are adequate provisions for public access, water sanitation, and public utilities and services. That just is not true. We do not have the water. So, and, and I've been consistent in, since I've taken office, of bringing this up in every, any time that it is relevant. We don't have the water, so we've got to, you know, wake up and, you know, face the music, and that's why I think that I'm, I'm not going to support a motion tonight to pass it, because I think it needs to go back to staff and have the new information that we received today from Watershed Progressive, because it's not in the plan, to make sure that that's in there. Bill?
Yeah, I, um, we have a difference of opinion. I think this project is an example of sustainable development. Everything that I have seen and heard and thought about and learned even, you know, through, through all of these deliberations, I think that's exactly what it is. And, so in that spirit, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the resolution dismissing the appeal with the conditions recommended by staff and the amendments listed in these deliberations, including the word "currently" and the other comments by the city attorney.
I'll second that.
We still have some discussion before?
If I may?
Uh, go ahead, Ryan.
Uh...
You're muted.
I just actually muted myself, that's hard to do. Everybody always gets it the other way, right? Would you entertain, I, I haven't seen, and I've been looking for everything in my email, I don't think I saw the latest water report. If there is a gray water inclusion in a latest report that it sounds like we received really late, if that's applicable and it's not in the, I don't think it's in the current resolution, if I'm not mistaken, I would like to incorporate that, but I wanted some clarity out of the staff when we were making a motion out of it.
Yeah, and we, we did, we drafted quickly some language that could be added to implement some of those, some of those items. It was the, reporter was sent fairly late today that included some information from Watershed.
I'm open to the amended motion. Ryan, do you want to have that read?
So the added language that we would recommend that would include that would be something along the lines of adding, adding a condition, "Applicant shall install and implement water conservation measures, including low water use landscaping, low water flow plumbing fixtures, rainwater capture facilities for landscape irrigation, and gray water facilities for landscape irrigation to the satisfaction of the community development director and building official."
And to clarify, James, is that, and I, I haven't seen the latter, I don't, did we, did, I don't, I don't believe I received it, I don't know for certain, though, so...
So the, the applicant provided a letter from Watershed Progressive that had identified several projects that were being, I believe, proposed, and then identifying how many gallons of water each would, would conserve, so that language...
And Watershed Progressive is working on behalf of the applicant, is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, so are these, I'm, is, I don't want to, you know, they, they know, I know what the assumptions are the mother of, but the, is, are these things that seem to be recommended that they're saying that they can do, or, and with the applicant here, I don't know if that's a question for them, but if it is plausible and they're supporting it, since it's a letter that came from them, I'd like to include it into the final motion if we can.
Okay, it looks like the applicant's going to speak to that.
If I could jump in there real quick. So, we've drafted the condition language to be somewhat broad, allowing flexibility for precise projects to be determined through the staff process, with the council imposing the requirement that there be four, those four types of projects with adjustments for the, on the ground as needed, and then I would recommend with the council's concurrence through the mayor, asking if the applicant would concur with that condition. It can be imposed over their objection, but it's worth knowing if they would object.
That was my question, thank you, Matt.
Chair.
Sure. Okay.
Hi. So Commissioner Blatts, we also have an individual...
The council member.
Council member Blatts. We also have Joe Madden on the line from the agency we used to prepare this study many months ago, many, many months ago. He can provide the analysis if you have any questions directly about this. These are proposed ideas. The more time that we've taken, we have to study, but we also want to make sure there's flexibility in this condition. We have no issue with the systems already basically ordered in the hotel. The gray water has high cost, low impact, to be very frank with you. We're more interested in investing in landscaping more than anything, so I want to make sure there's flexibility in this. Look, we, we, we prepared the, I stayed up till 3:00 in the morning yesterday because we got this late report from the appellant talking about all these water issues. The person on the phone has been waiting around for four hours to wait, to hear you out. It's really frustrating to me to sit here and have to, you know, react. We had to react to put that report together, it took a lot of time, you know, and format it in a way that so everyone can understand. There's a lot more action of this, so I urge you to be considerate of these conditions. They're proposed conditions. We will adopt many of them, but allow for flexibility and good faith efforts by us to determine what the best plan is for our building. Thank you.
And so, we would have a more, we would have a more generic version of that statement if council would be interested in simply requiring the applicant, or saying the applicant shall install water conservation measures to the community development director and building official satisfaction.
Uh, that's sufficient for my motion, and I, and, you know, and I think that was Jeremy, I couldn't see, the camera was on the council, not on the speaker, but, yeah, I absolutely appreciate that it's late. I just want to make sure, and that we got all this information late, and I appreciate the efforts that you have made, you know, responding to things in the last minute as well. Absolutely. I'm not sure what worked and what doesn't. It sounds like they've pretty much gone to at least a reasonable maximum of what they can do, but since there's a new letter out there, if it could be incorporated, it may go a little further, I'm happy to include in the motion that it's at the discretion of our community development director.
Sure. Randy?
We're discussing this, am I correct?
Yeah, we have a motion, we have a...
I'll second.
No, second.
Alternative motion, Randy.
I, I seconded, and we had an amendment to the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, an amendment.
Accept the amendment.
And now we can discuss, right?
So I, so I maybe add a little clarity. First of all, I just read the Casitas Municipal Water District report that's going to their board meeting next week, and they are, they are recommending that they stay at a stage three for the next year. So, one, we're not in a stage four. It's not to say that we won't get there, but the reality is we're in stage three now, and their, and their report states that they'll stay a stage three right now in relative conditions for the next year. That's one thought. The second thing is I did read that report today, and it's not that I'm smarter than all of you or, or any of that, but this is my business, water. And what I read in that report was a sustainable action plan for that site. And if they followed those guidelines 100%, they could create a 55 reduction in their water use. Right now, Casitas is asking all of us to sacrifice to a 30% level individually. My take on this, if they did anything between the 30 and 55, that's a win for this community. So I'm not going to stipulate or add that to the motion, but we need to recognize that they are creating an incredibly sustainable site, environmentally sensitive to the community, and, you know, when we talk gray water systems, I put gray water systems in, they're not, they're not the cat's meow. The return on investment is not great. Same with storm, some stormwater catchment devices. They cost more, the return on investment is not great. So, whatever they do is a benefit to the community, and, and again, I applaud them for doing that in every aspect of the build. It's not just in the outside, but it's in the inside. Everything that they're doing is contributing to lessening our, our, our footprint and increasing sustainability and a more environmentally friendly future for our community. So, I'm ready to, to vote, if you guys are.
I want, just want to make a comment, Souza. I, I really like, someone said that this project should be a beacon of sustainability, and I feel it's on that track. I also feel that the, that the owners, the developers are very open to talking with the community about improvements as they go along, and I would encourage that they meet with, for example, Steve Colome, with our, our climate committee about increasing possibilities for electrification, induction ranges, and that sort of thing. We can still have those conversations. I don't think we need to add that to the motion, but I feel that what I know about their backgrounds is that they would be so open to increasing anything they can do to be a beacon of sustainability. My, my one concern is that, and I think that this was expressed also at the Planning Commission... My, my one concern is that, and I think that this was expressed also at the planning commission and at the historic commission, is there actually, I'm changing gears now, there's actually compelling pros and cons on both designs, and, and that, I do, I do feel conflicted. I mean, you know, I, I really appreciate the, the work that Craig Walker, Don Theding, and Drew Mashburn in his letter. I feel Drew Mashburn truly represents old Ojai. You know, his family is all over the place in Ojai, and they're just wonderful. But in the end, I'm, I personally don't have a strong feeling. I'm not educated enough to have like a compelling argument either way, so I'm going to support what the, what the owners want to, want to do, you know. That's just going to, I, I know not everyone will be happy with that, but I am going to support the approval that the planning commission and historic commission, after a lot of conflicting, you know, discussion that they concluded. So I'll support that. That's all, yeah.
Okay, all right, great. Sounds like we have consensus, and I just want to reiterate that, well, I, you know, we've had new information, and I really feel that staff needs to look at that before we approve this. Once again, I'm ecstatic that you're so focused on sustainability. We just need it in, in the plan. That's where I'm coming from. So anyway, we have a motion, we have a second, we, roll call?
Mayor Protam Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
No.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes, let's add the history.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to item number three, the fiscal year, well.
About one minute break.
Okay, bye, everybody.
Thank you.
No roll order first.
Okay, we'll take a two-minute break.
I gotta get a cup of tea.
No roll order first.
And with that balanced budget, we have included in the budget at this point $103,000 in community funding. And so that is the amount that the city could provide in community funding while staying in a, at a balanced budget. Anything in addition to that would either need to be a reduction in another category or offset in some way, because the, the budget wouldn't remain balanced at that point. And so we did a little bit of research, because we did have a lot more applicants this year than is typical. I think we normally have two to three, maybe four applicants, and this year we had 15 applicants, as identified in the staff report. But we did do some, some research on what some of the cities around us are doing on this, on these types of funding categories, and we did find a couple of the cities around us, such as City of Ventura, actually provides $140,000 a year in their budget that goes to what they call community partnership grants. I wanted to call that out because it's important to note that Ventura's budget is $125 million, and so they provide $140,000 in community funding. And so for us, I know we've provide, we've provided around that same amount, and without knowing what other organizations provide, that amount may not have sounded like very much, but proportionally, we're providing about 1% of our budget, whereas Ventura, the City of Ventura provides 0.1% of their budget to these community funding grants. We looked at a couple other cities. I think it was Thousand Oaks. My notes are a little jumbled, but also provided about the same amount in funding as well. So it seems, you know, it's just like when you budget at home. If you don't have anything to compare it to, you don't know if you're spending too much on something or not enough on something. So we wanted to provide that information to give an idea of what the cities around us are spending and what portion of their budget. And so we've never set, as a city, a couple of the cities we looked at do set a firm amount each year, saying this is the amount of funding that's available, apply, and you'll be considered for part of that funding. We've never set a, a firm number, and so one of the things that we want to propose for consideration is setting a firm number, and one way to do that would be, would be setting a percentage, where if the budget grows, then that number will, will grow. If the, if the budget goes down, the number will come down. And so we were suggesting as a starting point that council consider a 1% allocation to community funding, which would be $130,000 this year. So that would be slightly more than what we've proposed in the budget, but we do believe we could identify some options to keep the, the budget balanced without making any major reductions. And so the last thing I'll note, well, first I'll note, the item on the agenda tonight is intended to allow the council to get information from the different groups applying for funding. It's a lot of information, so we were proposing setting this up as sort of a two-step process, where the council would get that information tonight, we'd come back in a couple of weeks to, to, after absorbing that information and allowing everybody to put their thoughts together, and come back at that time to make actual, the actual decisions for the allocations. And so just as one more piece of information, while considering that, we did go through and list the items that if we had to make reductions, would be areas that could be reduced. I do want to, I won't go through them, because ultimately, I don't recommend reducing any of these items. Several of them are critical. The TOT transfer to the CIP fund is what's going to make sure that we can pave the streets that we've promised to pave this year. Water litigation or water project funding is a critical item that we're, we actually are looking at whether we've even budgeted enough for that next year. And then contingency, we've, we've identified some funding as the council provided feedback at the last meeting for potentially some sort of partnership with the county on Sewell Park, and then catching up on some other deferred items, and rebuilding the reserve, which we talked about as well. So we don't recommend reducing those, but if somebody were to ask me, you know, the, the total requests are $340,000, and so if somebody said, how would you, how can the city afford to pay $340,000 this year, the answer would be reducing some of these items, which again is not recommended. So with that, we've asked, or we've offered each group the opportunity to come to council tonight and speak. Our recommendation, since there are more groups than usual, is that we would have our deputy city clerk call each organization and provide the opportunity to speak. If there's no one here, then, then we'll move on to the next group. And then I think we were talking about, there are, some groups have turned in cards, some haven't, so what we would ask is, as you come up to speak, if you turned in a card and you don't need it because you're coming up, let us know, and we'll pull your card so you don't get double, called two times. So, so mayor, if that works, we'll, we'll ask the deputy city clerk to call each group.
Okay, three minutes? Okay. First, Ojai Community Farmers Market?
Mayor, if, if I may ask, in our packet, they're kind of in a specific order. Do you have our packet?
Um, yeah, I was actually doing them in order, but I was starting from the bottom and going up.
It'd be easier to do it in the packet order.
Why would you do that?
Um, I just thought it would, try and be random, like the way I call the roll.
As they're speaking, we're reading their back, so.
Oh, okay.
You can do it in the order of the packet.
Do it in the order of the packet? Okay, so start with the, the top of the list then? So the, the first one I have then is Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council?
Yeah, thank you.
We're not flipping back and forth.
Do we have a time limit?
Yes, three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. So with the limited time available, we have to laser focus what we're going to say tonight. We have requested funds to extend some staff time and other resources on a particular project. As you recall, we have a currently funded CAL FIRE grant with the Ventura County Wildfire Collaborative. That consists of six projects managed, two managed by us, the fire Ojai Valley, two by Ventura Regional, two by Ventura County Resource Conservation District. One of those projects is the countywide home hardening resiliency program, which is managed by the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council. And that is a comprehensive countywide program, but it has a significant impact on the Ojai Valley. One of the, some of the things that will be contained in this, well, in this funded grant, and it's starting in June, is to hire and train three full-time wildfire safety liaisons for a period of 18 months, one for the Ventura River Watershed and Ojai Valley. Though, that liaison will conduct home hardening workshops, which include homeowner training, and then train the trainers on the more detailed home inspection assessments. And then we have the home hardening assessment themselves and improvement recommendations. And very importantly, this program has a standardized HIZ data collection, analysis, tracking, and management strategy attached to it, which is something that's so important in the area of home hardening, to get this kind of information so you can prioritize. This is a really intractable problem, particularly in a place like Ojai, where you have 89% of the, is pre-89 stock, which is pre-chapter VII A of the building code. And then we expect in the insurance industry participation with wildfire premium modeling. With the limited time, I can't go into the data management strategy, because it's not easily reduced to that. But what we're offering, the, there's no money in this particular project for the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, nor do we receive any indirect from this project. So we are hosting in our new office, the wildfire safety liaison, three days a week. We give a dedicated workstation and use of the facility, which includes in-person meeting in our conference room and video conferencing. Staff will be engaged in training and assessments, and then we will assist in community outreach in including recruitment and coordination of volunteers, public awareness and education, and our, of course, website. And this is important because this way, we can take this $800,000 project and lever it to our valley to its maximum extent. That would not happen if we did not participate as fully as we'd like to with the support from the city. So we are looking forward to, again, like we've done other, other places, is to leverage what's happening in the collaborative to maximize the impact here in the Ojai Valley on this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah. Would it be okay to ask each applicant, if we had to give them a reduced amount, would that still be helpful, or is that?
Yes, I, we did suggest in the staff report as well that because there's $340,000 in requests, we may want to ask, you know, what level of funding each group would be willing to take, because we're probably going to have to reduce some of the funding requests. So I think that is fair to ask.
What level of funding if we had to reduce? Doesn't mean that we will, but if we decide to, that we love all these people so much, we don't want to reject anybody, but rather, you know what I'm saying, we're going to have to be, we have to, we're going to be asking ourselves a lot of questions.
I think it's a question of sort of, you know, those expenses, the more we do, the more it's going to cost the Fire Safe Council. More staff time, more outreach, more mileage, more supplies, more, more time with the website person. All that takes time and money to do that. So to the extent our extent is, is reduced, then there's a reduced amount that we can afford to do.
Yeah, that's understood.
To do this, okay? So, but, you know, I guess the attitude would be, we'll take what we can get.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Chris, one question. Do you get any funding from the county?
We have received on one of the CAL FIRE grants that we manage, which is the fine-scale risk mapping and digital dashboard, which by the way, will be enhanced by the home hardening as well. All the projects interact together. We did get, we got $125,000 cash match from the county. cash match from the county.
But that was for that grant?
That was for that grant, yes. Doesn't mean we haven't asked. Thank you.
Two quick questions. In your description, mapping of the Ojai Valley, that refers to the fine scale risk mapping?
Yes.
So that's what that refers to?
Well, yeah, there's a series of projects. One is the Fine Scale Risk Mapping, Digital Dashboard, one's the Vulnerability Assessment and Evacuation Assessment.
Right.
All of those are data, have a heavy data collection and analysis point, which goes into the centralized GIS database. And some of that's going to be countywide, by the way, but some of it, that's what the fire protection district's paying for. And so all of these things, the home hardening data, all that goes in there.
Okay.
Okay? So as we, and the private contractor, Jensen Hughes, is doing the data management strategy, design, and implementation. So this is something where everything we're doing now is going to be feeding into this countywide, including Ojai, into the centralized database that is going to be publicly available.
And I'm going to ask everyone this, real quick. Would you be willing to provide your Form 990 if you filed it?
Yes.
Okay, to the, to the record?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next would be the Ojai Retreat Cultural Center? And can you give us your name?
My favorite place in Ojai.
Thank you. Evening. My name is Ulrich Pogger. I'm representing, representing the Ojai Retreat Cultural Center, a nonprofit organization. And we have provided cultural events to the community for over 30 years, and mainly in the areas of the environment, philosophy, the arts, education, health, and many events on community issues. I would like to give you a few examples about events that we organized on community issues. The first was on the water issue about 10 years ago. We invited a top water expert, Tom Ash, you probably, some of you remember him. And after he gave his talk, all water agencies in the Ojai Valley invited him for consultations. And he helped resolve many water problems in the Ojai Valley. Another example, in cooperation with the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, we organized a fire prevention program about a year ago or so?
June.
June, okay. And some of you attended it. Representative for the Fire Department from Ventura County attended it. It was very successful, and it raised the awareness of the community to the fire issues in Ojai. A third and more recent example, we invited Mark Whitman to explain his proposal for an art institute at Chaparral, which is now very controversial, as you probably know. And a few weeks ago, we invited the publisher, editor of the Ojai Valley News, and the reporters to explain to the community the challenges they're facing, and how to approach some problems. And all these four events have been reported in the Ojai Valley News, and these are just a few examples of events that we organized on community issues. And our goal is to organize more events on community issues in the next year. And that's why we would like to get some funds for that. As you probably know, events normally don't generate income. They generate a deficit most of the time. And that's why we can only organize these events if we get donations from our donors. And if we get, if we get funds from you, we can even organize more events like this, and with better speaker, and with a greater effect on the community. By the way, if you want to see all the programs we have organized for the last 30 years, the recent programs and the planned programs, you can go to the Ojai Retreat Cultural Center website, click on Event, you will see everything there. And now Joan Roberts, who is, can she add something? She just want to give some examples of events that we are planning to organize.
Okay, we're always planning. I've been on the advisory board for the Ojai Retreat Center and Cultural Center for over 20 years now. So it is like, you know, it's risen from the ashes. It was really down, you know, during the pandemic shutdown. But under Ulrich's command, it's really flourishing now. So our Cultural Center, we're putting a lot of emphasis on it. And right now, in the planning stage, we have three areas that we're going to have series. One will be community issues, environmental issues, and educational issues, all focused here in the valley. And just to quickly give you a summary of what will be covered in those series, for community is how will future developments affect the future in our charming town of Ojai. Another one that's coming up that's really important is affordable housing. And then another one in the community issues is divisiveness among long-term residents and our newly arrived residents here in Ojai, which we kind of got a sample of that tonight, right? So we're going to be visiting that. And then under the environmental issues, we'll have a series on, one of them, the controversy of planting trees in drought conditions. And our guest speaker will be Garrett Clifford, as you probably know of him. He's planting a lot of trees. He planted them on my property. So, and then also Ojai's Climate Park Project, which is going on. And then also the global and local climate change issues. So that's part of the environmental series. And then the last one is on education. We will have several panel discussions with the local teachers and parents coming together from different schools on critical issues, such as how to deal with bullying, violence in the schools, drugs, and racism. So that will be a series of very important panel discussions. And so I'm finished with the future, and I just want to say, we organized a concert up at the Retreat Center for Ukraine. It was a fundraiser. And this was actually organized by the community, coming together and providing all parts of this concert and gathering. And our local Smitty West and Julia, they have refugees from Ukraine staying with them. And they're musicians, and they're singers. So Smitty, Julia, the refugees, and our local musicians all gathered together. And it was a evening in the Shengar Laugarden at the Ojai Retreat, beautiful, overlooking the mountains. And we raised $6,500 that evening with 150 guests that arrived. So, and if you haven't been up there lately, it's just beautiful. You've got to go up there. It's on a five-acre parcel right above the ranch house, and it's always improving and proving. And I send my clients there. I'm a real estate agent here in the valley. And when they come to look at property, I send them there. So thank you very much. We really need these funds. We didn't ask for a lot. We just asked for what we need, and that's $12,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you, Ulrich. And it was a lovely, magical evening, that concert. So thank you for that.
May I ask, I can't find the report.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we got a problem.
We did notice, yeah, it looks like one of the applications was duplicated, so that one is not included. So we'll send that out after the, the meeting. But yeah, we don't, we don't have it in the packet.
All right, good. I'm glad I asked, because I'd be looking for it all night.
Okay. No questions? We'll keep going? Thank you. Next is Help of Ojai?
Hi, you guys. Good evening. My name is Jane Walter. I am co-executive director at Help of Ojai, the basic needs social service agency in the Ojai Valley. Today, I intercepted a call from an older Ojai resident whose wife passed away in April. On the day he brought home his wife's ashes, his landlord informed him they are selling the home he rents, and he must vacate within 60 days. He has nowhere to go and no income to dedicate to moving into a new home. To say his life has been turned upside down is an understatement, and this truly did happen earlier today. Unfortunately, these types of calls are not unique. Our two full-time case managers work every day with clients who have either lost housing or are on the verge without the funds required to move, in the rare case that they can find a rental. Our unsheltered case management list is at 50 individuals. We are asking the city of Ojai for funding for our rental assistance and emergency housing programs. With your assistance, we can help prevent homelessness by offering rental assistance to those who, without it, may face eviction. The current real estate market, as you guys know, in Ojai is so competitive that it is unlikely one would find a new affordable rental in a reasonable amount of time. The Emergency Housing Fund allows us to place seniors and families who are facing homelessness in short-term rentals during inclement weather, such as heat waves or winter storms. We've asked for $25,000 to support and to expand our current programs. If you guys are unable to grant the entire amount, our program would still run, but at a reduced rate. $25,000 would allow us to serve approximately 12 more households, a 24% increase in services offered. We thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jane.
I have a question.
Sure.
It seems like, I mean, I feel like this is super important, as I know myself, an older couple, that is going through an eviction process.
Yep.
They just can't find anything.
Yep.
They're 85.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm one of them.
Yeah.
I'm 73. I'm an older who can't find housing, or is having trouble finding housing. But my question is, it seems like this, I mean, I'm in favor of helping you as much as we can, but aren't there other agencies that also will help you?
Will help us, or help the clients?
Help you.
Not with this specifically, no. We, we don't necessarily receive funding from other agencies for this. What we often do when we're doing case management with clients is work in collaboration with, say, like, a county's agency, which this information I actually added in our application as well, is that we do work really closely in terms of homeless management with other agencies. We don't get funding for them, though.
Yeah, but you say.
And what we have found in the past with our rental assistance program is we're able to work a lot faster. And we're really proud of that, because we can often speak with someone and get them either temporarily sheltered as needed or housed a bit faster with that funding. So to answer your question, we don't get funding for that specifically.
Yeah, but you work in collaboration.
Yes, absolutely.
So you give housing vouchers and all that.
We do, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, that was my question. Thank you. Thank you.
Right, I had two questions. So that was one of them, was a redundancy of other community groups, not necessarily in Ojai, but in the county that do the like services. So that's one. You answered that. The second one is, is how did you provide these services last year?
In terms of, like, logistically, how did we do it, or what did it look like?
Well, you're asking for $25,000 to enhance, so do you have a sense that there's going to be more in need? Or how many did you serve last year in this, in this rental environment?
Last year, we worked, we helped 28 households. So it was about 75 individuals, so it'd include obviously families with children. The way we work in this process, and I used to manage this when I was a case manager, is we basically take the calls as they come in. So this case, for example, you know, this is someone who we would work with, see how we could support them. We might have months where we will have three people call. We might have a month where there's 10. And so we just, with our due diligence, review their cases and help kind of set them up into the best situation we can. If we're able to assist them simply by, like I mentioned, preventing eviction by paying their rent for that month, that's one household served, and we're able to secure their housing.
So that's what, that's what you mean when you say, we're, if we get this funding, we believe we'll be able to accommodate 20 more, 24 more instances of need?
24%.
24%.
So I would, so sort of just in my experience with how much housing is, that's the other piece, right? Is if we're talking about a household of, let's say, five, right, two parents, three children, they might be in a rental that's $4,000 or $5,000 a month, versus a person who's in a studio, whose rental might cost $1,000, right? That's kind of where we see that discrepancy and need a little bit of flexibility in terms of household size and cost of living, cost of rent for them. So it's not really black and white in terms of how much we allocate per individual or per household, because it really is kind of based on what they need, based on their specific, you know, household size. But we do look at, you know, what their income is and what their, you know, making sure that they are people who are high need. And that's part of the case management model, is figuring out how we kind of holistically can support them, too, if it's, you know, beyond just rent that they need.
Okay, thank you.
And would you be willing to provide a Form 990?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, thanks, you guys.
I appreciate the financial statement, by the way.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And our 990 is on our website, too, so we're happy to share.
Okay, well then, I don't need to go for anyone.
Thank you, Jane. Ojai Ed?
Thank you, everyone, for having me. Good evening, council members, Mayor Styx, fellow community members. My name is Brenna Furnas, local parent, business owner, and board member. I'm here to represent Ojai Ed and our application for the Community Services Grant, and share a little bit about this incredible program. Ojai Ed was founded in 2019 to help students of the Ojai Valley access higher education with a focus on first-generation college-bound students. So those are students who do not have either one of their parents have a BA. The program begins in sixth grade and supports students through 12th grade. In collaboration with Matilah Middle School, our Ojai Ed students attend weekly sessions focused on college readiness that includes creating five, six, and seven-year academic plans and learning about colleges and universities. At the high school level, students meet with our executive director once every four to six weeks to discuss academic progress and ultimately the college process, bringing support to families who face language and economic barriers. A powerful element for the success of our program is the high-quality math tutoring that we offer our students. Again, we offer these services 100% free to our participants. Currently, the program serves approximately 50 high school students and 15 middle school students. Not all of them are accessing the math tutoring program, but they could, I would say about half of them are. Our tutoring program costs about $10,000 a year to operate. Our board sees this as a very worthy expense. Not only are we addressing the critical pandemic learning loss, we are giving our students access to quality tutoring that they might not be able to afford otherwise. This year, our services were funded by generous donations from our community members. We had our first wave of fundraising took place in the winter of 2021. It was Giving Tuesday. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. It was a very successful day for us. However, a grant for $10,000 will ensure that we can continue this service free of charge to our Ojai families in the upcoming school year. We're extremely proud of our 2019, 2020, and 2021 grads who have been accepted and are currently attending Boise State, Cal State Channel Islands, Ventura College, SBCC, a slew of the UCs, and so many more. Our 2022 early acceptances have been to much of the same schools, plus Portland State University, Reed College, San Diego State, and many more. I'd like to acknowledge that we're privileged to be among a group of many worthy applicants doing incredible work in our community. We're so fortunate to have so many community-based organizations. And having said that, on behalf of our board, our executive director, Cara Hooper, our president, Maria Morales, George Gaines, Javier Ramirez, Luis Hongo, Wendy Hubbell, and myself, we thank you for considering our organization for the 2022 Community Service Grant. And we would be happy to receive anything that, any donation that you guys would feel is appropriate. Yes.
Thank you, Brenna.
Yeah.
How many students, I didn't see a number that you're currently?
So we're currently working with about 50 high school students and 15 middle school students.
And 15, okay.
So students can enter the program at sixth grade. And we have a wonderful collaboration with Matilah Middle School, we're really lucky, and an awesome collaboration with Nordoff as well.
And where do you do the tutoring?
So the tutoring actually happens on campus of the Thatcher School. They have graciously offered their facilities for us to use for free. And we have a high-quality tutor named Spencer Stevens, who tutors our kids, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Natural Systems?
Natural Systems? Ojai Valley Green Coalition?
Natural Systems is not here.
Correct.
Familiar face.
Think I've seen you somewhere.
Council members, staff, thanks for having us. I'm Kathy Nolan. I'm a board member of the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, representing the Green Coalition this evening. And I'm going to read something that you do have in your packet, but I'm reading it also for the benefit of the audience. We, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, acknowledge the spirit of Ojai, a community blessed with beauty and the natural environment, an active and vocal community, and most important, a community that cares. Supporting that spirit is my pleasure to introduce the concept of Ojai as a sustainable hub, which I think is really appropriate. It seems like sustainability has been kind of the topic this entire evening, or at least one of the main topics. The city of Ojai is an opportunity to lead the way in sustainability and its lesser-known sister, regeneration, by embracing those concepts and being a leading resource for the community. Be it state mandates, the effects of climate change, or just loving where we live, let's come together, make a shift, and take care of things. Good for the people, good for the planet. We like to point out the three legs of sustainability, the environment, the community or social component, and the economy, all seeded in the spirit to thrive and be resilient. We would like to kick things up a notch by including regeneration, which goes beyond conservation of sustainability by improving conditions. The practice of both recognizes how issues are interconnected, requires assistance approach in the acknowledgement of complexity. Simply said, it's about our children and our grandchildren and the world we want to leave them, the seventh-generation principle. We propose a four-year project with our funding request tonight being for year one of that four-year project, so this would be for the 2022-2023 budget cycle. Our ask is for thirty thousand dollars, and yes, we would be open to modifying that based on the conversation that we have all been a part of. Our proposed overall task is to sort things out and help create the environment for a hub to emerge. Echoing conservation, improving on what we have, opportunities abound. We are fortunate in that we have local resources. We have you, the city of Ojai, so essentially, this would be a city of Ojai project, a caring community, including successful nonprofits and businesses, the city hall campus, which is a part of Libby Park, and a wealth of knowledge and experience. We also have a town and valley that others seek for the above attributes. So this is an uncomplicated start. Our proposal to create a hub, an effective center of sustainable and regenerative activity in collaboration with the city of Ojai and the community. We envision the hub being one of information, of creating systems, and of place, and that would be this campus. How will we do this? We'll start with community stakeholder engagement, the process of working collaboratively, listening and sharing for preliminary programming. Community engagement is a powerful vehicle for bringing about environmental and behavioral changes with the intention of improving the health of the community and its members. It often involves partnerships and coalitions to help mobilize resources and influence systems, change relationships, and serve as a catalyst for charging, excuse me, changing policies, programs, and practices. I'm sort of going to minimize this because I noticed that I've got the red light, but I think maybe the best thing for me to do is, you probably had a chance to read this in the packet and just open it up for questions, but basically, once again, we're looking at a four-year project with our ask for year one, which should be essentially the community engagement, the outreach, working on creating a co-mentorship leadership program, and working on our website with the city of Ojai for sustainability. Master plan is the fourth year deliverable.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yeah.
You have a question?
Well, Kathy, were you, were you, thank you, Mayor, were you the, weren't you one of the original groups that actually did the landscaping back here twenty, thirty years ago?
Yes, on the demonstration project, that was in the early nineties. Yeah, I was part of that. So we actually, there was a kind of a concept plan, we actually worked on planning it, actually installing it, procuring all the materials, and creating a lot of the free classes that took place there.
You're in private business, if we were to contract with you to provide the, like, the same services, where do you, where do you think, would it take four years to develop or longer? And how much do you think it would run us?
So, probably, you know, three to four years by the time you go through the community engagement process. But I would say between three hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, it could, depending on, you know, how complex we wanted to make it.
I remember Sarrazo di was over three hundred thousand dollars for that development. So to actually, to receive something like that for the cost that you're looking at, I think it's a win for us, so.
Yeah, so this is the first stage of that entire process, would be for this year one.
Yeah, thank you.
Bill?
Yes. It's almost like a process of updating the two past rounds of Libby Park master planning that we have in the books, that we have in the hopper, so to speak, some of which was useful and some was never adopted. But very long ago, generations ago, and it almost, as I read the adentiment, it's almost in the form of a contracting, in terms of OVGC would be in a coordination role, reporting to Robin Godfrey and James Vig at the city. So that, that sounds like kind of a contracting thing. And I gotta, I must admit, I'm going to think about this some more because I do think with the campus now being reprogrammed, with the restoration work in Stewart Canyon, with the efforts to get more focused on habitat restoration in general for better aquifer recharge, and what I hope will be the possibilities with programming Sewell Park for the county. Yeah, there's a lot of need here, and I have to admit, I'm going to think it through, I'm going to think about this, a little bit more about this task and how it best to be done.
Right.
So I just wanted to give you my first impression.
Good. And one other note that I wanted to say was, I said the city hall campus, I know it's about eight acres, but that would be, you know, to be determined, because I know there's some adjacent areas to the overall Libby Park that are not contiguous, that potentially could even be included as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, just, can I make a comment? I just want to thank you for this in-depth report, because to be honest, I was so focused on the El Rubor Hotel, I just have it, but I haven't really studied it, you know, glanced at it. And just while it's on my mind, on page, oh, those numbered, pages aren't numbered, but under new, building new partnerships, what page is that? One, two, three, four, page four. I just happened to notice in the Ojai Recreation booklet that goes out, that you now have driver education. So since we have not yet, since, until we have bicycle education in the schools, which is my goal, why not have, I'm sure we can find, you know, there was a woman in Ojai that did do bicycle.
Yeah, I know who it is.
Yeah, we could get her, that could be one of your, your projects for the next semester in the recreation, at the recreation department. See, city manager is nodding his head. Yeah, so, you know, let's talk to Dee about that, Dee and Jeff. Yeah, that'd be a good project.
Also?
Thank you, Kathy. This is a very helpful report, appreciate it.
Yeah, it's great, thank you.
Ojai Valley Women's Club?
Is he going home?
Nope. Ojai Valley Museum?
With Dee.
Good evening, I'm Wendy Barker, executive director of the Ojai Valley Museum. You guys all know what we do, I'm just going to give you a little update. I'm happy to report that things are going really well at the museum. We recently had a free community event, a reception for our latest exhibition, Ojai at the Crossroads, Then and Now. It's the first reception that we've had since before the pandemic, so that felt really good. Other events and programs are back too, including weekly walking tours of historic Ojai in a regular schedule of town talks. I'm going to give a plug for this Saturday, we have a treasure sale outside on our patio from nine to three, lots of great donated, interesting items for sale, including tons of art, so if you need art, we're the place. We're working with other organizations on both private and community events at the museum, they include the Ojai Tennis Club, the Ojai Education Foundation, the Ojai Music Festival, and both Rotary Clubs coming up for a Living Treasures event. We recently received a very competitive grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation. We're going to be producing new interpretive materials to share the story of Gray Gables, now Gables of Ojai, which was a national model for a new form of retirement home. I sincerely hope that you are proud of the job that we're doing to preserve, explore, celebrate, and share our authentic history, art, and culture. We appreciate the city's support over the years, and we look forward to continuing our mutually beneficial relationship. And now, Brian Aitkins, our board president.
Hello, everyone. You all should have the spreadsheet that got passed around. So that's just an update through...
New one?
I put it on your, on your, this one here.
Next slide.
Give you a copy.
This?
I never saw it.
Might have another copy.
Pretty much the same as last year, all we did was change the dates, numbers are exactly the same. I was in a hurry this afternoon.
To protect the innocent.
I'm kidding, Randy, for you, here's my binder. It's an ongoing joke for, I think, ten years now. So anyway, you can see, one of the things I wanted to point out, we're asking sixty thousand, last year we asked fifty thousand. One thing I want to point out, July twenty-one, you'll go down there, you'll see that big amount, three thousand two hundred and forty dollars under maintenance. That's the deal we worked out with James last year for the museum to purchase the new compressor, just in case you're wondering.
Where are you? Where are you?
July twenty-one, first column?
Oh, okay.
If you come down, you'll see three thousand two hundred and forty.
Okay.
Look like you're doing a Catholic cross to me there, Susan. So anyway, that's a big item that sticks out. So again, we're doing everything we can to control our costs. We have, we've been interviewing people, I tell them that we do very extensive financial reports, as long as I'm around, you're going to get those financial reports because that's your responsibility to look at them. If you throw them away, that's your fault.
I think you made the font a little bigger this year.
Did I?
So you can actually read it.
I try. I try.
We're all aging.
I will tell you, I looked through real quick, none of these costs are salaries. People were, you know, salaries, it's the operating expenses that we are asking you for, salaries. We go out, we do membership, we do annual pills, we do the PPP loans, anything we can to get, get money in. So, what else? James, I will be looking at the Ventura budget, because I will be checking to see if the museum of Ventura County is just under community funding, because that hundred and forty thousand dollars seemed a little on the lower end, so.
City of Ventura, though, so you said Ventura County?
Oh, sorry, city of Ventura, yeah, they get money from the county, too. One of the things I keep getting asked for every time when I show up is, why aren't you guys part of the city budget? Why are you competing with everybody else? I think Mr. Miley, who I paid him nothing to say those, and was recruiting Steve Quillis across my lap while I remain silent, may bring that point up. So, again, we're very appreciative of the support. We, as, as most of you know, I think, just did a fabulous exhibit on Ojai warming, and so we're getting that message out, we are getting people back into the museum, and we are expanding our programs, so.
Thank you, thank you, Brian, thank you, Wendy. The reception was really fun, so thank you.
Oh, great. Getting ready for a hundred-mile bike ride.
I have one question, Mayor. We, we seem to do this every year.
Yes.
On the, on these maintenance expenditures. My question is, why aren't we, why aren't we paying for those in the hole? We had this discussion many years ago.
Yeah, it's city property.
Right, whose building is that? And if you guys were to leave and vacate, it's ours, so it's our responsibility to maintain it. I just, no, nothing on you, James, you're doing a good job managing the resources. But I just, every time this comes up, you know, I remember one time, we were charging them sixty-five dollars to change an outlet, and it was like, why, you know, why aren't they calling us and saying, we've got outlets that aren't working, or our AC's not working, or this isn't? You know, I'm, I'm just always questioned why you folks have to pay for something that we're, that we're technically accountable for.
Yeah, so if you, if you follow that line straight over on maintenance, you'll see for March twenty-second, it's a matter of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six, twenty-five. One of the things that Wendy mentioned is more and more, we are not only integrating with ourselves with the community, but more and more, the community is tending to wake up to what we have. And so we had, we did a concert last, about a year ago, we put three hundred seats back there with a nice stage that was brought in by the Ojai Underground Group.
Yeah, partially, two hundred.
Two hundred? No.
It was three.
You sure?
Yeah.
I set them up, I think it was three. I took them down, I still think it was three.
Wendy took them down.
It was a lot.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we all took them down, it was very hot. So, so the, of that, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-six, eighteen hundred of that is a, is one half of thirty-six hundred dollars that we've spent at the suggestion of the lighting specialist for the festivals to improve our lighting rather than the, you know, the ones we bought at, I don't know, Costco, and threw them up real quick. Now we have the, the nicer ones, and we're getting a lot more people that are very interested in holding an event back there. And so, we're actually looking at the, the contract on that and what other people are paying for the event. So Wendy and Kristen have that assignment in their...
Well, I think when we have additional hearings on CIP, we've talked about this in the past, is how are we going to take maintenance from public, from our public facilities, and actually not put them in CIP, but actually put them in a maintenance fund so that, so that there's money set aside for these repairs, roof repairs, stucco and plaster, windows, doors. There's a tremendous amount of upkeep on our public facilities, and we just got to figure out how to budget for that and not CIP it.
Yes, yes, and as you know, it's a very old building, however, we have a very nice gentleman, who I think, maybe his wife said, you need to get out of the house and go find some place to fix other people's places, and so.
Get him out of the house.
John Cuthbert, if you know John. Anyway, fabulous, and he is always there repairing everything. These are all the little things inside, and, and we love John. They've been a big supporter over the years. So, again, Randy, we're very grateful that, for that, we try to do the best job we can for interior stuff and to fix it. Yes, Bill?
Membership trends, how's it going? And also, I assume you, if your 990 is not posted, you could provide it?
Absolutely, we have our tax return done, we're on a fiscal, we, some years ago, we realigned our calendar year to fiscal year, so we have that prepared by the same accountant down in Ventura.
Membership trends, how's that going?
Definitely went down during the pandemic.
Well, of course.
I renewed.
But we're still working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the benefit was that we added a second, second, essentially, annual pill. We had the annual pill that was going to the end, end of the year, then we added one in the August, September timeframe, and so that was very helpful in that way. But as Wendy's saying, we just talked about the, because I'm like, okay, our memberships are, and, you know, it was that people were like, well, you know, I can't go to the museum, why am I paying?
Coming out of the pandemic.
But, but, that's changed.
It'll change.
Right, I mean, if you, if you remember, we were closed for over a year.
Right.
And the main, you know, benefit of membership, it's, it's really just about supporting the local museum or coming free, and if you couldn't even walk in the door, you know. But it's, it's trending upwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the one thing I do want to point out is... Yeah, the one thing I do want to point out is, again, because of certain tax things, we're donation only, you know, suggested donation. However, in this last period, our entry fee, entry amounts that we've had shown up, we're already over budget for the year. So they, people have been showing up, and people have been donating to the cash register to the box, so. Good people. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Brian.
Good news. Thank you. Thanks, Wendy. Thanks, Ryan. Ojai Valley Hospital Community Foundation? Ojai Valley Chamber of Commerce?
Hello again. I'm here as the Ojai Chamber Board President on behalf of our CEO, Jamie Fleming, to present our annual grant application for funding for the Ojai Chamber per subcontracted work for the Ojai City. Jamie would be here himself, but he is undergoing a serious illness and is currently with his family in Nashville while in treatment at Vanderbilt University Medical Center. One great thing about the pandemic is the ease of working remotely via Zoom and email, so Jamie is still fully working for the Chamber remotely. I would like to introduce Andy Gilman, our Board Chair, or Board Treasurer, to discuss our grant application and answer any questions that the City Council may have. Thank you.
Your, ma'am, your name for the record?
Summer McComas.
Thank you.
Hello, Council and staff. Andy Gilman, Ojai resident and Chamber of Commerce Treasurer. So a couple of points. You have the list of all the activities that the Chamber is doing. The amount requested this year, you will notice, is 65% from the last fiscal year. And our intention is to have zero reduction in services as a result of that. And our longer-term intention is to actually basically pull ourselves away from funding from the city going forward at some point. And the reason why we feel some confidence in that is that coming off of literally two disasters, the Thomas Fire and COVID, we are seeing a much more robust business community. So the gap that you will see when you look at, on the revenue side, of course, there's the city contribution that has been ongoing. We believe that while we are maintaining what we think of as a conservative budget, if you look at the membership dues in your packet, we've identified potentially, and again, this would be best-case scenario, but something like a $25,000 increase in membership dues, simply because we have worked with the businesses, supporting them during this time. We're seeing more of them now coming ready to pay dues. So that includes new businesses, of course, that start, but it's working with the existing ones that are there. So that's our longer-term plan. And what we should see is each year, a reduction at some point, that there would be no cost to the city except for where we would, the city would see the Chamber as a valued partner and only in a kind of a contracted basis, request from, from the Council and the staff. So we think we are a vital part of the community. We see it growing. You have the list of activities. Those will all continue. So to anticipate questions, if we were to receive less, what we would do is we would look at the services that are here and work with you to decide what priorities could we see, what could be cut, and what could be carried on. We looked at all of those scenarios as well. So obviously, we could reduce staff. Those would be a worst-case scenario, reduce staff time. But in general, what we're looking at is the same kinds of activities with this request, with no change, with a board high mandate priority to work with new members and existing members for the dues collection. So diversifying our revenue streams there. Do you have any questions for me? And 990, of course. Yes.
If you could, yeah, thank you. If you could, it's just, I think it's good, good practice, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Remind me, how many, you started, or Jamie did, this new, with the Rotary, the downtown Winter Wonderland thing? It was packed. Do you have, remember what the count was? The estimate of how many people?
I don't know what that is, Summer. Do you happen to know what that is?
No.
I don't. We could certainly get that for you, but I agree, that was a highly successful event.
It was amazing how many people gathered for that.
That's right. And Rotary, too, as you pointed out, right? Nice collaboration.
So I was just wondering about that. And then, some of these other things. You know, Jamie's been doing a lot of this.
Yes, right.
And is there going to be some diversifying of effort?
Yep. So what we're going to, well, we actually, our board has been vigorously meeting about this, obviously, that's, it's something that we're going to have to address. And so things like website maintenance, people like me can do that. I have that skill set, so we'll be taking that on. But there will be some of these things where we will be having to step in. And it depends on, frankly, Jamie's health. He may be back and everything's fine. If he's not, then we will adjust with either new staff or board members taking on various things.
I guess my observation is that you get string the numbers. I'm hopeful it will be fully, he'll be fully back.
Me, too.
But even if he is, fully back, even on top of that, I think diversifying the effort would be wise.
I totally agree with you. And so as a board, that's been a big priority for us, especially these past few months, is to say, who can really take on these committee chair positions and take on that activity? Even things that Christie, the staff person that's in the office, is doing, there's things that we can do so that she can take up some of the slack. So for example, the chamber mixers that we have once a month that Christie has taken on.
Yeah.
We can, obviously, we help out with that, but then other tasks that are more office tasks, for example, the website maintenance that I brought up.
The depth of human capitalist community is astonishing. And to the extent that you can tap into that and get people participating in things like, you know, the parking issues. The Formula Business Code issue from the, you know, business perspective, you know, it doesn't, there's a spectrum of people available, and I just, I think that'd be great.
Nope. Take it to heart, and it's our priority as well.
Kind of organize that effort more broadly.
Yes, thank you. Yep. Yes.
Andy, thank you for the report, and welcome for your first time here.
Not my first time here. Oh, representing.
Representing the Chamber.
I took a COVID break.
Oh, very nice.
Thanks.
I know in the past I've asked for this, James, do you think by the next staff meeting, you can research all of their activities and see if there's any redundancy in what staff's doing? Like, when I see Ojai Day, I'm not sure what their relationship to Ojai Day is. I thought we ran Ojai Day, but things like that, can we just look at that and kind of give us a hand? I know that they're part of the Parking and Traffic Committee, but we, that's an ad hoc committee.
Yeah.
Open to the public. You know, and when I look at the well certificate of city buildings, I love that idea. I think it's a great idea, but I don't know if we have anything in our policies regarding being a well-certified business. Might be something we might want to look at. I see a benefit to it. So those are the things I'd like to flush out. Can we do that? You know, what, you know, what's the win? If you're doing it, how does it enhance us?
Yes.
And then can we make it not necessarily something mandatory, but something that we reward them with some, something? You know, maybe we forgive a business license certificate for a year. How do we do it? We can figure it out, but.
No, I agree. I mean, it's such a, it's such a milestone to get that certification, so I totally agree. The more that we can work together to make that beneficial, I would like to see.
Right.
I'm going to go off script for two seconds and just say, I have two big personal wishes for the Chamber going forward. One would be that it becomes the place where new people come to figure out what to do in Ojai, where the office is right now. It's too far removed from the center of town. So some long-term vision would be, in some central location, that's where people would come to say, oh, what's happening in Ojai? What concerts are there? You know, what are the restaurants to eat at, et cetera, et cetera? And the second thing is to have a strongly dynamic committee that is working to attract people, and Ryan and I talked about this years ago. But we have a committee of people that are working to make Ojai the kind of place that would attract the kind of businesses that we would want here. For example, I worked at BST for 18 years on Bryant Street. It was all people just working on their computers, eating lunch out most days, 60 people in the office, and we just don't really have businesses like that now. So if we can build this kind of infrastructure or relationship with the city where we're attracting those businesses, I think that's a huge, a huge boon that the Chamber could bring, working with the city. So that's a priority as well, that you don't have in this packet, but that's my goal.
Good ideas.
No, no, that's very good. I think it's critical that we find a central location for the Chamber.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's, really, it's rent.
You mean something called a visitor's center?
Something like a visitor's center.
Yeah, center town.
That's a concept.
Without the controversy. Right. But that's the idea, a place that is central where people would see it. I mean, what the museum has would be a great example, right? What's in that office, that people would come and all those resources are there. So it's just, it's too far removed. But there's calls every single day about what to do and where to go. So it's clearly seen, but it needs to be more central.
I agree.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Summer. Much appreciated. Next is Ojai Children's Memorial Garden. And next is the Girls Empowerment Workshop. And, okay, that's it?
That's it.
All right.
Ojai community.
We called them, nobody came at the beginning.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. My mistake.
Anybody on Zoom, potentially? Somebody has their hand raised. I'll. Okay.
That's interesting.
Two public comments.
Okay.
Okay. Take those.
Shall I see if this person on Zoom is one of the, okay. Mr. Philip Carruthers, if you're there, I'm calling on the Zoom.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Are you representing one of the community groups tonight?
Yes, the Ojai Community Hospital Foundation.
Okay. Then if you would like to go ahead and speak, and you have three minutes, and you can go ahead and share with us.
Okay, thank you. I was there earlier tonight with the executive director, but we had to leave. She was not feeling so well. So anyway, yeah, the, I wanted to thank the City Council for considering our application. The Ojai Hospital is a very important resource for the health of residents of the Ojai Valley. Ojai is fortunate to have the hospital, since rural hospitals have been closing at an alarming rate across the country. The Ojai Hospital's Foundation's mission is to support the financial needs of our community hospital, which are great, by the way. An important part of the hospital is the new skilled nursing facility, also known as the Continuing Care Center, a 75-bed facility providing short-term rehabilitation and long-term care to patients. Over 90% of the patients are residents of the Ojai Valley. The COVID pandemic was very challenging for the skilled nursing facility. Several times, the facility had to lock down visitations due to COVID, which was a real hardship for the patients and their families. But as we enter a new phase of this pandemic, we're learning ways to minimize exposure and allow our patients to visit with their loved ones. One of the best protections, of course, is to have everybody vaccinated. However, even with vaccinations, we've seen breakthrough cases and need to provide the safest way possible to have family and friends visit. The best practice is to have socialization take place, take place outdoors when possible. Thanks to our Ojai weather, we can do that much of the year. We, having outdoor patio furniture with the proper shade umbrellas, would provide a beautiful and safe environment for our residents and patients. And that's, that's the crux of our application here, is funding to have the proper outside patio furniture where the, where the patients and their guests could, could meet in a, in a safe environment. So we hope you'll consider that. We very much appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Any questions?
Did you have a list of the specific pieces of furniture you were looking for? I didn't see that.
Yeah, there is a list. It's a preliminary list, and I don't have it in front of me now, but I think it was something like 100, or no, 17.
Oh, I see it.
Table and 51 chairs, as I recall.
Okay, I see. I apologize. It's down, down near the last page. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Philip. And we do have one public comment. Bill Miley on this item?
I have to speak at least four times. So hello, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. It seems to me that one of the community grant applicants is closer to an institutional element in our city, that their existence and their function could be compared to a foundational element, like a foundation of a building. They provide strength in the present and historical continuity into the future, almost forever. So if one considers its absence, absence or demise, you might cry, or you might have a big void. So many of you know what I'm talking about, the Ojai Valley Museum. It seems to me that an organization which is, which builds historical memories and historical events and environmental and built elements can be considered to be an institution. My, what, this gives me, then leads me to say, I believe that the museum should not have to compete in a community funding process. It should receive a guaranteed annual funding to maintain and sustain the memory functions of what I see as an institutional organization for our city. It becomes the memory arm of city government. And one other thing, I would like you to consider establishing a priority criteria form, which you would then ask each of the applicants to complete, and they would have these elements, and I'll send it to you. One, the impact of the dollars on the city. Two, the efficient use of the dollars in what kind of a program. Three, effectiveness of the program. Four, percent of total budget. Five, is it a continuing program or a one-time project? Six, what does the money produce? Seven, what's the impact it will have on Ojai City? Eight, how will it be measured? And nine, what percent of your budget is acquired through fundraising? And I'll send that to you. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Next, we have Jeffrey Starkweather.
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be right if you didn't speak.
Yeah, I know. I have to at least follow Bill. We're kind of a tag team. I think it's important to think about a small-town government. Your nonprofits actually become a expansion of your city services, expansion of people being involved. And it's not really comparable to compare them to a larger city, because a lot of those functions are actually being done by the city. I don't think you should have a rigid dollar amount. I think you should look at each of these things, and how much are they adding to the city? When I was in North Carolina, and we did this for our county, we had each applicant have to provide a multiplier analysis, like how much of the dollars you're providing, how many volunteers are coming in, how many other events are happening because of that? And, you know, we, you will talk about your physical infrastructure, how important is your roads and so forth, that your, you know, that's one of the things you might even cut back on. But we don't think of civic infrastructure, which is, which is what makes a community. DeTolke, when he came to America, that's what he talked about, was the amazing civic infrastructure that we had of people volunteering. And I've just whipped out something from the internet. An organization called Public Agenda, and they describe, "Infrastructure provides the scaffolding for all the ways that people engage in public life, from voting to volunteering to having a say in public decisions. Research in a range of fields shows a strong, ongoing connection between residents, robust relationships between policymakers and their constituents, accessible information on public issues, and positive attachment between citizens and their community are highly correlated with a variety of positive outcomes, increased in public health, better student success, and resilience of your community." So I really think that we need to think of this more as... So I, I really think that we need to think of this more as expanding our resources in the community. It's a multiplier. And I, I would not just automatically have a dollar figure. I would look at each of these and see what value they're providing to our community. The future people sitting up here, you know, when we're all gone, maybe some of the people that actually volunteer in these activities and decide, you know, I think I might, in fact, some of you might have even decided to do that because of these activities. So it's, it's kind of like, you know, we're all getting older. We need a new generation of people who are going to become leaders of our community. And I think supporting these civic, uh, these civic organizations can help do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. All right, we'll move on to discussion. Do we have any?
Just going to digest all this information.
Okay, all right. Any comments? Okay, well, thank you all for coming and presenting and doing all the amazing work that you're doing. Oh, sorry, Ryan, go ahead.
I was going to say something real quick. Sorry, I was trying to raise my hand. I, I just want to echo what Jeff said. I, I've said for a long time that um, I've always felt that the, the fourth leg of the chair in Ojai that keeps the whole community together is a robust involvement from nonprofits and other community groups. For years and years and years and being involved in multiples of them, including eight years with Ojai Flow and other stuff, I just want to reiterate that, yes, we, we are always going to disproportionately spend some money as a, as a city compared, percentage-wise compared to big cities for this type of stuff. It's a very large request this year. We still have to be fiscally responsible, but it is. The, there's so many, if you go through the history of Ojai, almost every significant accomplishment or pushback on something that was really a threat to Ojai has really existed because there was a really great volunteer-style, nonprofit-style group that was involved in it. So I just want to say like this, this is, I love everybody for showing up. We got to figure out, it's going to be a hard decision on what we're going to do, but it is a core element. And, and directly to what Jeff said, yes, I, I don't know if it would have, uh, I don't know if being on Ojai Flow is the reason I'm on the council now, but it sure made a big difference. And I think there's a lot of people, and a lot of younger people are involved in some of those community groups as a kind of an entry point to getting involved in a lot of different community things. So I just want to be super supportive.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, and thank you, everybody, again, for coming and, and waiting and speaking. Much appreciated for all your service. It's really inspiring. All right, we'll move on to council member reports.
I just really quick, uh, uh, VCTC is meeting in person again, uh, down in the Camarillo Council Chambers. And we had a meeting that was very interesting in terms of a discussion of the alternatives for the 101 widening in the HOV lane. Uh, Brandy is laughing, it's been going on for years.
Years, good luck.
And so there was a spirited discussion about the whole idea of, you know what? Adding a lane doesn't necessarily solve congestion.
Hmm, that'd be a son of a gun.
And uh, I wanted to point out that that has gotten me thinking more and more about the, you know, why do we think that you solve parking problems by adding parking capacity? If we see that adding a traffic lane doesn't necessarily solve a freeway congestion problem. So, you know, we have a lot of thinking to do about this.
Can I, can I add to that? Because I was on VCTC.
I know you were.
I was all there too.
I always ask, I said, by the, a $15 million environmental impact study, first of all, on an area that we've already studied, I, I was, I was lost on. And then the second thing is by the time they built it, which would have taken 15 years, what would traffic look like 15 years from, from, and I was on it two years ago.
I know.
Correct. So it, it, it was absurd, absurd, absurd to me then. And then when you ask them, why aren't we looking at different forms of transportation? We got the whole center of these freeway systems that are calling out for some form of people-moving device. And I'm going to tell you what I, what I got, the, the feedback was, well, if we took them from Thousand Oaks and we came down the grade, they couldn't stop. Seriously, that was the response I got out of a county supervisor. I went, by the time we started in Thousand Oaks, coming down the middle of the highway, coming down the grade, we couldn't put the brakes on. That was one of the reasons not to think outside the box. I was, I was amazed.
There's more thinking outside the box is what I'm reporting.
Yes, good for us.
Anything else?
Uh, okay, city managers report?
Yeah, I have a, I have a couple items. I'll try to get them quickly. Uh, so we are planning on uh, May 17th to, uh, one week from today to have the joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, they've prepared a presentation that they're planning, or that they would like to give to the city council. Uh, and it'll be our first Parks and Rec joint meeting in, I think, two and a half years or maybe.
Next week?
Yeah, maybe even a little bit longer than that at this point. So that's, uh, one week from today is, is when we're planning to schedule that. On May 24th, uh, we have two, uh, we have a few items we're working on. Some committee recommendations we're working to get back to council. But the two items that are um, firm for May 24th at this point will be the budget, next budget workshop for the capital improvement project uh, program. And then also the discussion requested by council at the last meeting to discuss um, districting and, and kind of the status of districts. So those are both listed on the.
Rank choice voting options.
Yes, rank just choice voting options. Those are listed on the May 24th agenda. And then I wanted to just give a little bit of information because we keep saying that we are seeing tons of events coming through this year and more events than we've ever seen. And so just as a little sample of that, this Sunday, uh, people may have seen we have a multiple sclerosis bike ride that will pass through Ojai. Uh, there was a sign up that had said that the um, that there was a detour, I think. Uh, but we wanted to clarify, we're going to post this online. There is no uh, trap, uh, street impact expected. They're expected to go onto the bike trail through Ojai. So uh, we've clarified that and we'll, we'll post some more information on that. But that race has about 400 riders that will come through Ojai. There will be a rest spot set up at Libby Park, um, uh, where the riders will be able to rest on their ride through. Uh, we also have the Recreation Department's Annual Open House Event, which uh, the banner across the uh, Ojai Avenue has more information. But that is scheduled Saturday, May 21st from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Uh, it's going to include informational booths, raffles, giveaways, obstacle courses, uh, game room play, and much more. So everybody's invited out to the Rec Department's Open House. And then lastly, uh, we had upped the uh, the limit on the number of concerts right before COVID. We had uh, increased it from 21 concerts per season to 24 concerts per season. We never got close to 24, uh, you know, during the pandemic, obviously. But uh, we uh, are expecting this week to confirm the 24th concert of this year. Uh, and so we are going to have a full concert season in addition to all the events like the Music Festival, Art in the Park, the Independence Day Parade and Concert, Lavender Festival, Topa Music Festival, Ro- uh, Rotary's Taste of Ojai, uh, Ojai Pops Concert, Storytelling Festival, and of course, Ojai Day. So we have a full slate. And there's also uh, going to be some nonprofit events that are new this year, like uh, a local nonprofit is going to be putting on a, a, a talk by Marianne Williamson. And a, there's also another group putting on a benefit for the Ukraine. So we are seeing, uh, there's just a ton of events. We're working to make sure that we're going to be able to um, monitor those events, have the appropriate measures in place, all that kind of stuff. But uh, it's going to be a, an exciting year for Ojai.
Whole lot of fun. Thank you so much for organizing.
A lot of, a lot of walking by the police department, I think.
Can I ask a question related to that?
Yeah.
Uh, because I'm always concerned about parking for all those events. So when's our next uh, meeting? I'm very eager.
The Parking Committee.
Especially with Bob Daddy's every morning complaints about the, you know, bike parking. Uh, I think we need to get with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, we did have, one of the members is unavailable, or I think unavailable. So we'll follow up on that and try to get the group uh, back together for that. And I think the idea was to try to have one more meeting and then bring, bring some recommendations back to the council, so.
Wonderful, thank you so much, James. Exciting. Um, okay, future agenda items?
I don't know if this is a future agenda, but I want to, oh, is it, are you, is it okay? Or am I out of order? This late hour. Um, did you see the article in the VC Star on the Oxnard adopts rent control program, adds tenant protections? I think 10 people sent me a link to this. They really want us to pay attention and do something because it's just getting crazier and crazier.
I'm intimately, I'm intimately familiar with it.
Huh?
Yes, it's a rent stabilization ordinance and an eviction protection ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, there's pros and cons to everything.
I've read the full text.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, well.
Well, what.
So are you asking to agendize the discussion on rent stabilization and eviction? Or do you want us to just read up on it?
Well, no, I'd like, I, I, I don't know quite what I'm asking for. I could use some help with what I'm asking for. But it feels like we need to respond to what's going on in the community. And I need, and we need to find a time because our agendas have been so packed, so.
Well, and, go ahead, Bill.
Just make one comment. Oxnard is going to have to budget about $1.5 million to run their program?
Uh-huh.
And they're going to put a fee on every landlord? So they, what's their budget?
Their city budget? I think it was 300 million at this point.
300 million.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asserting.
There's a lot of, I'm just saying it's a difficult discussion.
I, I'm sure it is.
For a very small city to have.
And it is, though, the solution, rent stabilization and living wage. That's all we, we can't, that's all we got.
So at some point, do we want to agendize that and have a?
Let's, can we talk about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So just for clarity, is that a?
Uh, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Pending.
Maybe.
Um, I would like to agendize, well, as you know, June is Pride Month. And uh, so it's important to value, of course, all of our residents. And so I'd like to uh, put a presentation item on the June 14th agenda to issue a proclamation and for a few local activists and residents to give a short presentation about past, present, and future events and organizations that have supported and continue to support our LGBTQ community here in Ojai. So it'll be just five minutes or so.
Great.
Okay.
Mayor, may I speak about Councilwoman Francina's comment?
It's not on the agenda, Mr. Miley, so I, I would, it's always the council's option, but.
Could we wait till it comes on the agenda, Bill?
Or include you in their conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could include you.
Go, okay, go, go!
You're swimming every week, so.
So I participated in trying to help Susan find a rental. So I became really familiar with the cost of rentals in, in the Ojai Valley. And it's skyrocketing, it's going up really badly. And I would suggest that maybe there might be a need for the city council to look at the cost of rents, rents, and what they're doing in Ojai. Because it's really scary, very scary and very troublesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill. You're too young. So, no kidding.
I, I made, uh, con- sorry. Contact with a person who just wrote a book called The Affordable City. And he has a whole program. And he's a professor at UCLA. So I just reached out to him and I'm inviting him to bring, uh, to come to Ojai, to the Ojai Democratic Club to do a, a talk. And people can respond to it. But he, he addresses that issue. How it would apply here is a different story. So he's actually, right now, he's preparing to come. He's looking at our housing element and so forth, so he can actually take, you know, this stuff and, and ha- so we could, we can have a discussion of that. And, you know, you might want to invite him to the city council while he's here, I don't know. But anyway.
Wonderful, thank you. Good news.
I have a question about future agenda. If it turns out that the next meeting is not very busy, right?
I, I think it will be.
It's already feeling that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm going to discuss, uh, just with you, the letter from Lauren. As I'm not quite sure what to do about it, I'm going to meet with her. About the speed, the, I would like a better understanding of how the speed, um, how, how those figures were arrived at, because she's pointing out that a bicycle triggers it.
Mm-hmm.
And so the average might not just apply to car traffic. It might not be accurate because we were trying to figure out how the speed, the conclusions were different from her observations.
I can answer that. And um, there is some explanation, we don't record any data for any vehicles that go under, under a cer- certain speed limit, which would be most bicycles. But um, but I think the simple answer, uh, because I think they had a lot of ideas they wanted to share is that that would be, that could be discussed as part of the capital improvement project.
Okay.
Program, so.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, well, on that note, uh, thank you all for your insights and participation and uh, we're adjourned.